Start that over. All right, so the time is 5:03 PM. I'm calling to order a work session of the City Council of the city of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, and I will clap my gavel again. And we'll open with citizen public communication at the, for the start of the work session. And just a reminder, this is a session where we're not going to take any action, but it may lead to specific direction to council or to staff from council that we want to follow up on. With that, any members of the public or residents wish to speak? We'll move on to the next agenda, which is discuss the following items, but take no action, updates to emergency operations plan and follow-up. And so, council, the introduction to this one is that I think our last council meeting, Mayor Potem requested that we spend some time assessing our readiness for, well, I say readiness and also just information for council about in terms of our preparations for emergencies, specifically, I think, in conjunction with a lot of the raised awareness with regards to wildfire preparation and droughts that's been affecting our region. This also raised, you know, a number of residents have also raised this as a specific area, given that we are in a very much a more at higher risk area, given the density of our trees compared to, you know, our residents' structures and our buildings. And so, what I thought we'd start with is the staff putting together information regarding our contingency operations plan and have Sylvia present information with regards to, you know, what we did as a result of Winter Storm Yuri, some of the follow-on actions that are in progress, and also just, you know, where we're at as far as some other items that we've captured over the last year and a half or so, as far as outstanding items for completion. And then, as following the presentation, we can have an opportunity to discuss, you know, what additional steps we may want to take or information we will bring back for future discussion, since this is obviously a core issue for our community, given our risk area. With that, I'll hand it over to staff.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. So, the emergency operations plan is not just our plan, it has multiple moving parts. We have inter-local agreements with cities around us where we share resources and also Austin ISD. We participate in the county's hazard mitigation planning efforts and our own continuity of operation plan and our own emergency operation plan. So, these things have to function as a well-oiled machine in order for all of our resources to be used efficiently and not create any unnecessary bottlenecks in the system for other communities around us who may need resources that we may have also available to share. So, during COVID, we did create the first COOP, the Continuity of Operation Plan, and that was really as a result of who's going to be doing what, what is the staffing level going to look like, what are the schedules going to look like, who's going to be on staff and who's doing what. This led to some of the discussion about our landscaping crew being a, essentially, an extension of staff, when we did have to reduce the number of technicians in that particular area. Along with that came who's actually in line to do what. A lot of our staff had not completed FEMA training at that particular point, and there are a number of FEMA classes that we have to attend to be certified in order to be able to participate in any Travis County or City of Austin or any city emergency operation plan. So, staff has begun those trainings. Those trainings are led by Len and his department, Chief Carter and his department, who is not here. Both Chief and Carolyn are on vacation this week, lucky them. But we did put our COOP plan into place, and then when Winter Storm Yuri came into play, we were able to test the staffing plan and we were able to test our communication protocols. A lot of things came to light during that event, and you heard, you had a post-brief on Yuri, and you heard us talk about our need for staffing needed to be hardened. We did not have a, an ability to get staff here from outlying areas. Our HR protocols do not require emergency operations activation, which is essentially when your EOC is activated, your staff, critical staff have to stay onsite because they're the ones that are going to be providing the necessary resources and manpower. There's time that's given to that staff member to make arrangements with their own family, their own personal necessities, and we have the ability to also have exemptions for those staff who maybe are single moms, taking care of elderly parents, or have health issues themselves that they can't stay away, or they can't stay and help. But we need to work those things into our HR processes, and those are not fully vetted out yet. So, that's one of our big things. We still need to complete that human resource policy. In terms of equipment, power was a major issue, and the PD building is the only one that had power available, and that severely limited our ability to provide assistance. So, since that time, council has approved several items. The generator purchase was made for the lift station. The electricians who installed this are also giving us a quote for a cutoff switch over so that we can go to generator power as needed. You have not seen a generator purchase because it's going to be a capital improvement purchase, but we do have some rental agreements in place should we need to be able to cut over to generator power here very quickly. There was a discussion about batteries and battery storage. We have not gone down that path for City Hall. The other item that was really critical was fuel. We were able to beg, borrow, and barter with Austin ISD to be able to fuel our PD units and our Public Works units. PD is not necessarily outpolicing during the time, so we have reduced fuel needs during this particular time. All last year, we went down a path of doing an onsite storage for fuel here that's UIL-rated, has fire department, but there was a lot of resistance because of the environmental impact for maybe a 200 or 300 gallon tank here and would we really use it, et cetera. So, we went an alternate route. Chief is working with the, I guess it's a shell station at Westgate, and we bought three 30-gallon temporary pumps essentially that Chief would fill 72 hours prior to the event, and he feels that'll get us three days of fuel. There's a 75-gallon tank for diesel that goes on the truck that we could be using for the equipment, and it's mobile. So, that in my mind is a temporary stopgap measure that gets us a few days. It will not get us into a longer-term effort. By that point, we're going to have to be relying on the Texas Department of Emergency Management or FEMA or any one of the other resources that would be available. But fuel remains one of our weak spots over a long period of time. We also had an issue with tools and inventory. We really didn't know what was here and how much we had. So, we do have a PubWorks software that's been in proof of concept Dakota for two or three months now?
About a month.
Yep. That has, is going to allow staff to get a complete inventory and maintenance records so we know what we have and what actually works when we need it. Budget and finance did just agree to allow that proof of concept to move forward, and it's in your budget amendment tonight. Council also approved supplies to house staff for extended periods of time and to create what we call shelters of last resort for residents when they're out of heat, they can't get to the hotel, they don't have any family, there's nowhere for them to stay. These are last resort shelters. We do not want to make the accommodation so comfortable that this is the first place they go. That's why they're called last resort, and that includes cots, food, water, and other critical supplies. We are still going through an agreement with the hotel that would block out 12 rooms, but he's going through a remodel, so I'm not sure that that's going to be a possibility in this next block of time. And I suspect that with rolling outages and things in the summer, we may have a need in another area perhaps to be able to cool folks as a cooling center. So, I mentioned shelter, I mentioned fuel, generators, portable toilets have already been handled, food, water, and then the city well played an important part to ensure residents had a non-potable source of water to be able to at least wash and wash dishes and things like that, maybe not drink, but perhaps boil and then have a potable source of water. Communication protocols, and the city had shied away from social media. You all know that's the fastest way to get things out, right? You can stand up your Facebook page very quickly and do a live broadcast very quickly. We do have a YouTube page now, and so with this equipment, we're able to do that as well fairly quickly. We are moving away from Code Red and are going to Warren Central Texas, and that is all around our area because they have more accurate information and are pushing out information much faster than we would be able to do it. We're doing 25 other things. We don't have a communications officer set up, not yet. Our coordinator hopefully will be doing that, but Code Red is the place to go for, I mean, Warren Central Texas is the place to go for information. And then, of course, we still use our eye contact. And then, the other, the other big thing that is still a work in progress is establishing resident expectations. So, we do a lot for our residents. We go in and check up on our elderly. Oftentimes, their family is calling PD, having us do things that perhaps a neighbor or a friend or family member should be doing, especially when that person has medical attention and needs that need to be taken care of. So, this past year, Public Works has been working on the Neighborhood Captains Program, and it's, it's up. It needs to be strengthened a bit, and Chief wants to do a national night out corresponding with introducing the Neighborhood Block Captains at the 2022. We have a couple of at-risk populations, the group home, those folks who have mental health issues that we know that do need to have special attention and either evacuated or relocated, and we continue to work through those issues. And then, the other one is pets. A lot of folks do not want to leave their pets behind, but when we are faced with a very small area of resources, or perhaps the hotel who would not allow pets, that, you know, we're going to face some issues there. So, Carolyn was working with, an agreement with PetSmart and PetCo, and potentially a resident partnership, and that would be among residents. And so, to address the fire issue, there is a capital improvement plan for the Lone Oak and Sunset Trail that would create some redundancy in the system that allows for adequate fire pressure. We still do not have adequate fire pressure along Countrywide and that area of town. That is a potential capital improvement plan that's going to be coming forward in the budget as Public Works continues to vet that out. The trails has been an area of concern. How are we going to get water through the trails? And I don't have an answer for you on that. I don't, other than extending water lines through the trails, which is going, is an expensive proposition. TIDAM just opened up some additional grants, the Texas Department of Emergency Management just opened up some additional grants. If you were affected by fire, in the last round of fire issues, you're eligible for some dollars. If those dollars aren't all expended, they will open it up to other fire-prone communities. So, we'll keep a watch on that. Anybody have any questions?
So, a couple, a couple of notes, just because I want to make sure that, I think there's some, some updates we probably want to make to our website to reference the correct materials. So, if you can navigate to the city's current website for the emergency management section, there are a number of resources that we have out there, but it also might be good to just revisit some of those resources, make sure that they're, they're current. But if, I'll kind of give you an example, a couple of things that'd be useful to post there for residents. I think it's under, you can just do a search for emergency management and it'll probably...
I think it's under the Public Safety Department.
Yeah. Yeah, so we have an emergency management, then a subsection COVID-19, then we have a separate section for fire protection. You know, there's a little bit of like resource overlap between like the ready, set, go wildfire action planning and having a separate fire protection. I'm wondering if we might have a better way of presenting like emergency management as a kind of holistic view. The other thing I think we're missing here is two documents. One is, we are participants in the Travis County Emergency Management Basic Plan, and we should link or host that document here so that it's clear what our emergency management plan is. The other is, I think it would be useful to host the Continuity of Operations Plan here as well. I know we, we go through updates on that, but, you know, just have it as a, as a point of reference because it's, I don't think it was something you could find easily on the, through our website, and it's useful information for the public to know. It contains like our, you know, EOC activation, who's in, you know, the line of, you know, command and things like that. But I just think overall, like if you click on the fire protection, actually, there's a number of like useful sort of, you know, things that were, are relevant to, well, actually on the left-hand side, Sylvia, go back there, sorry. Yeah, if you click under, under emergency management, there's a separate fire protection section, and then we actually have like a wildfire protection and a Firewise Community. And like I said, I think there's maybe some thought about how we can organize this so it's all, you know, it's presented under emergency management if we want to make that an umbrella, and, and, you know, certainly, I think fire protection and wildfire protection, you know, are, are some basic things that, you know, we want to make sure people are prepared for. And, and we did just update our wildfire protection plan back in 2021 as well, which is, you know, referenced here, which is good.
Yes.
So, but those are a couple of notes, just in terms of, I think, I, just how we can present this information to make sure it's accessible to the public, but also those two documents, just to make sure they're, they're part of our website and available to the public as well. With that, I'll open it up for council for discussion and questions. Councilor Johnson?
Sure. I have a, I have a few that are, as we go around, I'm just going to keep sticking my hand up. I didn't see anything about utilizing the solar panels that we have up on the roof here. It's a gigantic array. It's, I couldn't, I was like looking for like the history of like when we got that. I'm thinking it's over 21,000 kilowatts, just based on like how much like we have on our car, carport, and in the middle of the day, air conditioning blasting, like our meter is like not moving. So, you know, if we could utilize this a little bit better...
So, there was a question about storage of that energy.
Right. So, you, you mentioned, you know, we're going to go look into like battery storage. Like, we haven't like yet gone down that road.
We have not, no.
Right. And, and I totally understand that, but the diesel and the generators, that's great, but this is, this is almost free energy. The scissor switch would be really useful as well, because I know, at least for ours, they don't generate if, if there's a local power outage. It's just so like utility workers aren't walking into a hot grid, but if we can get one of those switches, then we can actually like power these buildings.
It's called a what switch?
You guys were looking to the code. I, I think residentially, I don't think they're legal. Are they?
It's not a legal thing, but the utility often doesn't like to do it. But if we're installing a generator cutoff switch, this is the same as it's a generator cutoff. Like it's, because you have to install this big, huge switch.
Yeah.
And that's already in the budget, is the generator cutoff, so might as well make it a cut over to the solar also.
Yeah. So, I would just be a big fan of, I mean, we already, we, the panels are up there, and it could keep this entire building like very cool. And then, it'd be nice one day if we can like run out to the other buildings. That's expensive, I know, than your trenching and stuff. Okay, that's it, that's it for now.
Councilor Reitz, and then Councilor Lishel.
Yes, thank you. A couple of questions. So, we put a lot of effort into the wildfire protection plan last year. It was all revised and such. There's a host section on maintenance of our grassy areas and such, and our brush and such. How is that coming along and are we keeping, are we keeping up with that maintenance schedule?
We are keeping up. Dakota, do you have anything to add with that? We, we just got the interns and we just got American Youth Works here as well, so they will be working through the summer, but it is in conjunction with the landscaping contract. Carolyn only uses the landscaping contract for specific project-based items, and those items are going to be more hand-cutting and mowing, from what I understand, and so that's American Youth Works and the interns.
Okay. And how about our fire hydrants? Have that, those have been tested, and we're all in good shape with that for this year?
We're in good shape with that. At our, as of our last testing, I'm going to see if I can pull up our, our test results.
Weren't they just in the area? Because I saw them driving around.
Yeah, we actually were just doing some new testing for this year, and we're also doing some hydrant maintenance as well, where they tear apart the hydrants and rebuild them, just to make sure they're in good working order.
Excellent. Do you have the plan? And while you're looking for that, there is also a host section on homeowner education. Do we have, I haven't checked our new website, if there's any real homeowner education about, you know, where to store firewood on your property, et cetera, et cetera.
That was just a brief blurb on the Public Works Open House, but no, there's been no specific targeted like wildfire prevention for homeowners. We probably need to do that.
I think there's a lot of stuff out there. There's a lot of information out there that we can just add to our site. That would be good. I hate to bring this one up, but do we have protocols for an active shooter?
You would have to ask the chief. We did start talking about active shooter training, but I don't believe it's been completed yet. Do you, Matt? When y'all went through active shooter, did y'all complete it? No.
It would seem to me that our police department would respond if anything happened at our elementary school, and so I think this would be something that, that this would be a priority that, that's reviewed, particularly with the light of the new information that's coming out of Uvalde of different things that didn't work and such, and making sure that we have, you know, I saw the radios and such. I'm hoping that was an upgrade to our radios, that we wouldn't have similar problems and that type of thing, so, okay.
The radios is one of the required communications because we would be one of the responding agencies. Austin ISD has its own force, and then obviously Austin PD, and then we, as long, as well as Travis County and any surrounding agency.
Yeah, I'm sure it would be all hands on deck, but we would be the fastest there, I would assume, so we, you know, we certainly need our protocols in place. And could you have the chief report on that at the next?
I will.
Thanks. That's what I have.
Thank you. So, I was going to just second this solar. Please redouble our efforts to get the solar sorted as a generator alternative in the event of an outage. Also, on the fuel thing, it would, I hope that the chief has 72 hours notice of an emergency event, but in the event we don't, I would much rather have fuel onsite. So, if we could work from these tanks usually, like the 75-gallon diesel tank on the truck, like can we always have that full or at least partly full? Can that be a working tank instead of kept empty? Things like that.
For the diesel, yes, for the diesel. Diesel's much less flammable than gasoline, so that was the concern with public safety on where are we going to store a tank for fuel, even if it was a 100-gallon tank for gasoline? That was a major concern with wildfire not having water out here, but...
Okay. Yeah. Also, the, you mentioned the Public Works inventory, and that's great. We've got some software coming in to help with that. And is there any kind of status update on the other inventories? Like, I know that we've had like an admin and just kind of general city capital inventory in progress for, I don't know, a long time?
It feels like a long time. As we went through our equipment repair and replacement, we did update a good portion of that inventory, and it will be in the budget presentation as we go through equipment repair and replacement. I will make sure the council has, if you want an advanced copy, we will provide that.
Okay, thank you. And then, the last thing is the city well. So glad to see that. Is that work in progress or is that done?
The repairs to the city well are done. They're complete. It, ideally, we would have all of the necessary sort of quick connects so that folks can come get water and, you know, it not have to be manned because that, that took up some resources last time as we were having to man. We're not quite there yet, but the necessary valves and things have been repaired.
Okay. Thank you.
Alfonso, Mayor Potem?
No. Thank you. When I was looking the, the plan, I, I think that, I can see that when we are looking the fire protection, I attend the, the meeting that we had that Saturday, was people from the fire department, and when I was talking with them, they had a lot of information for fire protection. As, as the member reads, she mentioned, this topic is not new.
Right.
And when we are looking about pressure in our fire hydrants, I think that is part of the equation, but maybe the most important is the combustible. What is the combustible? Will be wood, will be leaves. So, in my mind, I will try to invite people from the fire department, that they can came here and they will give it to the people from Public Works, some instruction, going to the trails and say, look, all of that area, you must clean. All of this other area, I suggest that you need to do that, and our staff taking notes, taking notes. So, in that way, if we prevent, when they will come to the houses, meadows, and other houses, villas, and the old town, what will be the area that they need to be maintained almost without the weeds, no more than one foot? And at that moment, well, if we were working with people from the, from the Public Works Department, and they are four technicians, maybe they can start working with that. Even though we have also the other people, then by contract or by something, they will be watching that, but the most important is the combustible. And we can have the best plan, but if we go there and you have a lot of wood and a lot of things, we will have problems. The other will be more information to the public. At that time, I think that we need to be strict, and we need to enforce some policies, then they cannot make barbecues or something outside. They need to avoid cooking outside because some accident, then it's, it will pass and we will have a big, big problem. So, my suggestion is then, it's good that we have these plans, but the most important is to prepare our people, how we will avoid worse conditions. Now, the rules from the TCQ, Texas Water, the, the state regulator means that when you have almost every 500 feet, 1500, you can have problems with 1500. Within 500 feet, you have another 500 and another 500. This is here, residential. Outside, the commercial is every 300 feet. So, this is by law. So, what happened for us, because I used to have that experience, my point was that I was working with a lot of people from the fire department, and that guys, they were special. Why? Because when we used to have some emergencies, they used to bring the hoses, they used to bring, they moved so fast, and they, they were working with a sequence. So, here, we need to start working perhaps with some of our people in that area. If we don't have that kind of hoses, and if we don't have that kind of training, will be impossible because you can have the pressure in the fire hydrant, but if you don't have the hoses, you're out. So, that kind of things, I think that is very, very important. The other was with the power blockage. I, I think that we need to start looking then, in 2011, we have a big, big problem with energy, and at that time, they tried to figure out... And at that time, they tried to figure out when the people, they, they needed to use more energy and when less energy. For us, we don't have a big consumers here. So you don't have a place, a, an industrial plant that is taking so many kilowatts in one moment. But we can mention to the people perhaps that it's possible. And if that is possible, we don't need to have panics, a panic. Because if they don't have power, I, I, I think that they need to understand then where or how that will, that will be coming. So for the power blockage, again, as member Reed, she mentioned about the people shooting. Three days ago, I came driving and I came for, for Jones and was a lot of traffic. And I say, what happened? Nobody told me nothing. So was traffic here as incredible? And they, they turned, I went to the school, go back. Didn't talk, they say, ah, 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 ah. So, but we don't have any information if that was something in the center, then they have some special events or something. This was, I think was a Wednesday of last week. It was around one or two.
Graduation.
And I saw people desperate, that they were taking these streets and they don't go to any place. So that is a situation that perhaps don't sound too much, eh, it's only one time or something. But when I saw fights, that Wednesday, I saw five people. Because, cow, they were desperate and they didn't saw the, the, the light. I'm, I'm sorry, you tried to say something?
I, I, some people had asked, and so I asked chief, and he said, there's graduations, multiple graduations that were happening. So the traffic was bad for like three days in a row.
Yep.
And he, I hope he doesn't mind I say this, he said, AISD did not plan it very well. AISD police did not plan it very well. So it's just like, they didn't have a plan.
Well, and so the rest of the stories, they normally coordinate very well with chief and he helps them with their traffic circulation plan. But in light of the Uvalde shooting, they closed ranks and they didn't talk to really anybody. They handled everything internally. So we were really left with the results of poor planning on their part. And it was days of misery.
Well, maybe this is the intention of this meeting, that, that we need to start working and how we can improve that kind of things. And then we need to spend time because it's important, that kind of things. So for the flood, I saw that they will have some signals and other kind of things for improvement. And when I saw the plans, I, I, I saw that they need, I, I saw some small mistakes. Then they say Public Works, the seven people from Public Works, and it's not seven. According with that, it's eight in one part. And in, in another part, again, they say Public Works and they were the, the old titles and that kind of things. In the plan, then they put here, if, if you will go to the plan and if you will go to page 11, staff composition. It say, the Sunset Public Works Department consists of seven employees. The Parks and Natural Resources Manager and the Utility Superintendent, the Grounds Maintenance Supervisor. So the, the Parks and Resources Manager is the Public Works Director. And they say seven people, but here, according with this, it's not seven. They are five. But you can, you can fix it, more or less fix it with the page. So, I have that here. In, in the first part, they refer to, okay, in the first page, the first page, almost on the bottom.
The very first page of Public Works or the very first page of the plan?
Yeah, first page, the, the COO, the plan, Continuous Operation Plan. This is what I tried to say. Yeah, they, they are simple mistakes, but it's mistake. And I, I think would be official and would be important this. So if you will read on the bottom, they say Public Works Department consists of seven staff and include, okay, if you will count all of them, they are not seven, they are eight.
Correct, that's eight.
And if we use the same for page 11, I think that is no bad idea. So in that way, we will have all of them. Now, lastly, then I tried to say is, eh, eh, last year, when member of the council Reed mentioned, this, this was part of the job for the wildfire prevention and they developed papers. And a lot of these papers, this is internal. And all of these other papers, they are from Austin. And I think they have nice books for, for coloration for kids, for the school. So I, I propose that we need to be more active with that kind of education. And people, also they need to clean the back of their houses and they need to remove that combustible. That's all that I have, thank you.
So I had a question on the, on the fire, on the training of staff and the hydrants. Is, is that a proposal? Because we do have a, a contract with Austin Fire, but by the time they respond, I mean, they were on Brody, right? And so is the proposal that we carry hoses and train our staff? Is that, is that what you would like to see?
I, I think the first, you as administrator of one city and with the experience, you need to evaluate how important is this? And with, with that criteria, you need to figure out how possible is that one or two of our employees could have training to the level of the fire department? Because even though you put in one scale, our guys, they open the fire hydrants to flush. Our guys, they check for pressure with another company. But sometimes by rules, they cannot touch that unless it's the fire department from the city of Austin. So it's something, my advisor, don't give it to me that question. You need to investigate if that is possible because this is how that works. The city has the responsibility, but this city doesn't have a fire department. In other cities where I was working, part of the utilities department, they have a special training and they allow them to do that. So here, indirectly, we don't follow that. Because when they are checking for fire protection or flushing the fire hydrants, we are doing by ourselves, but we need to have the, the approval of the fire department of the city of Austin. By, by law, we need to do that flushing by the TCQ. But by the law of the fire department, they need to be sure because if you have somebody that he doesn't have, some potential would, would be problematic. So this is why I tried to say, for me, I would be teaching this guy, but I am not, I, I, I am not staff, Sylvia. You are the staff. This is what I say. So I don't give it to you an order to do this or that. You can investigate how we can accomplish that. Because it's true, if we start with the fire and we don't touch nothing, because we will call the fire, it takes six, seven minutes to come here. Well, maybe this is something that we need to write. So in that way, the citizens, they, they are not desperate or they have frustration, but we need to do our homework and know after the fact.
I've managed a community where we lost a third of our city to a fire. We didn't have adequate fire protection. We had the only paid fire department in the area and a volunteer fire department. And we still lost a third of the city. The volunteers that showed up were drunk. And so that's, it's something that we need to investigate because it's one thing to put a public work staff who is trained to read meters as a firefighter. So, but yes, it is a critical need because the fire department is, is aways. By the time they show up, six to seven minutes, we'll wipe out this city.
But no firefighter, no firefighter, but they can install the, the hoses, they can install a lot. Training for that, fire, you have to have another special training to do that firefighting. And it's very difficult. So for experience, that is important.
Councilor Reed?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest that this might be a great month to do an article in the newsletter. And you might want to include that map that's in the wildfire protection plan of, it's kind of color coded on risk areas. And if you look at all our homes, they're like all dark brown or black, which are the highest risk areas because we are surrounded by green belts and such. And, and the other thing is that if we ever make headway on the code compliance officer, that might be a perfect person to be an educational person to go in. And if somebody wanted an assessment on their home, like how is my, is my home fire wise? And for someone, a city staff member to come in and say, well, to do that, you need this and give a list of suggestions and stuff. So, so that, I think that would be very helpful.
And Councilor Reed for the map that you're talking about as far as the red, is it part of the wildfire?
It's on the wildfire protection plan. It's, it is page, I gotta get my glasses, 19. There it is. So you see us, the, black is the highest risk, the brown is the next highest. So we are right there. And the other thing I learned in all this, with my research in this, is that an ember can travel up to a mile. And I never thought it would travel that far, but so.
Yeah, eh, this is not the map, that is not the map. Eh, eh, but I think they gave it to us zones. And that zones, they are very clear, the zone two and the zone where you have the, the trees. But our, when I tried to say meadows and ourselves, we are in zone one that is 30 feet from home and zone two. So this is what we need to be very careful, then we need to maintain clean. And eh, but eh, as Sylvia, she mentioned, we cannot have guys that will go directly to convey, convey or to fight with the, with the fire. So needs to be somebody that is dedicated and trained to do that. But minimum this is then, then they have.
Councilor Johnson?
I, I have not read all the literature, but so that, that map is like, what is flammable? But I'm kind of curious, what do we think the source of the fire would be? I, I just assumed the source of the fire will be all of these frontage roads? Just like a car that catches on fire, starts as a grass fire, moves into, into our green belt and then?
Our fire was an out of control barbecue. Our fire was an out of control barbecue.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, it's, yeah, so the, the other side is, again, that homeless camp off of West Gate is just, is gonna be an issue. And then the, the community that's just across West Gate, Fourth of July and New Year's, they have a crazy fireworks and it's, eh, we can't do anything about it because they're in Austin. And Austin just does not, eh, it's gonna be.
Something wrong that is.
It could be smoking.
Eh, something that is very common is, is the wind. So in some places such as this place, City Hall Police, you, you need to have a wind zone. And in that way, the wind zone will say the air is coming from the north to the east. So in that way, we need to be careful with that people because it's moving in that direction. So, and principle, when you need to have exits and you need to see what happened around. And if you have more wind zone in, in one mile, another mile, and later they, they, they use the SCADA system. And with the SCADA system, they bring movements of the air. So in that way, they plan and they will tell the people, don't move to that area. Get out from that area because the wind is moving in that direction. But we don't have nothing. And I think that we need to start looking at this moment. Eh, I was in the fire from 2011 in Bastrop. I was there and was more than 14, 1400 acres and a lot of houses. And you don't believe how ugly is that? Believe me, so this is why be careful.
Are there questions or comments from council? So Sylvia, one, one question or follow up I had with regards to the well, because I know one of the original things that we had asked about investigating, I don't know if we ever got very far in this, was having a, like a small volume treatment option for some of the well water so that we could provide non, or we could provide potable water in emergencies? Like whether there's any kind of equipments, you know, that could be purchased that's not intended to provide continuous treatment of the water, but kind of spot or on demand treatment? And whether that's individual, you know, things that we can hand out? Like I know some, some residents were referencing like life straws. There's been some, you know, residents saying, well, we could maybe treat like a few hundred gallons of water just to make it, you know, for emergency use. Have we had further investigation of that or can we? Okay, I think, I'd, I think that's been something that with all the boil water notices we've had in the recent years, you know, just in terms of, you know, being reliant on the Austin water, we're, you know, dependent on all that for potable water. And that's something that might be helpful if we ever get in an emergency situation where we have prolonged outages. The other one, I just wanted to go back to the communication portion in terms of the, the, where we're at. And just to reiterate, so we have the eye contact, which we want to depreciate and, and try to move people towards Warren Central, Texas.
Code red.
Okay.
We're moving away from code red to Warren Central. Eye contact still remains our internal way to push things out.
I think that may have been misidentified on the bullet. Okay, yeah, instead of move from eye contact to Warren Central Texas, move from code red to.
Oh, yes, move from code red.
So we want to keep eye contact as a way of getting out to residents for non-emergency, you know, purposes because obviously there's a, a value in saying, let's reach out for announcements and things like that. And we want to encourage residents to continue to use that. But for emergency purposes, the Warren Central Texas is where staff is recommending that we have a more direct reach and, and, and they have more direct access to mobile numbers and ways of reaching out to people, okay?
And chief and I have already discussed, yeah, we want to phase out code red, it's antiquated. But we, and this is a great project for the community coordinator to work on when they start. We would, chief and I have already discussed, we want some sort of SMS notification too for residents to sign up so that we can easily send out a text and then everyone that signed up for it. It's just, it'll be whatever we choose to go with, it'll just be getting residents to register for that. So that'll, that will hopefully, Warren Central Texas is great for now and it is, yeah, that's what we've been using. But in phasing out code red, we want to, the replacement for that, chief and I believe the best thing would be to find an SMS so, so residents can receive a text on their phone immediately.
Council, if there's any further comments, I'll move on to the next item, which is direction to staff. And I'll try to put together some of my notes and make sure that we have, you know, direction where we want to bring back items. I'd recommend this is something we probably want to revisit on a periodic basis that we don't. It's just so it's on our attention and we're following up because we still have a lot of outstanding items, I think, from our, our last session. And I would suggest this might be something that we want to revisit, you know, in the near term so we can get an update on where we're at for the, the status. It may be that we, you know, want. It may be that we, you know, want to do that in conjunction with some of our budget if we're looking at investing, you know, in certain equipment or we'll come back from staff report. So I'd recommend that we do bring this back as part of the August timeframe so we can get an update on where we're at with some of the next steps we have. So Sylvia, in addition to things that we're tracking for our current list of emergency action follow ups, so I mentioned the website, just to make sure we have those two documents. I think you got that as a note. There was a request from Councilmember Johnson and, oh, you got it, okay, great. General cutoff switch, active shooter training, yes, that was in my list. Inventory, article and newsletter for promoting wildfire awareness in the next newsletter, small water, small volume treatment options and what might be done, and then code red. The other one that I had from Mayor Potem that I think is investigating whether Austin Fire Department would be able to provide some assistance with going in our trails and making recommendations for, you know, essentially combustible clearing, right? And that's kind of in conjunction with, you know, making sure our trails are not sources for some of the combustibles. That's really kind of coordination with Austin Fire Department. I don't know if that's feasible, but from their point of view, but since we're there on contract, you know, from us, it's certainly, we want to have a good relationship and hopefully they can provide that.
No, that might have happened when they put the plan together. That was one of the requirements that they meet with their.
They go ahead and walk the trails.
Yeah, so I don't know if that hap, I assume that happened. Did they actually, I thought they drove around and did that. So if you could just verify that, yeah.
I also spoke.
And this is last year.
I also spoke with the gentleman that was here during the public works and he did say that he would come back out, or he would actually come out and help us go through the trails and look at potential areas that are at risk. That was something I did discuss with him. Just got to reach back out with him and get a time set up that we can actually go through and look at those areas with him.
Great. All right. And so we'll get an update on this. Like I said, I'd like to bring this back as part of our August, just in terms of if we want to incorporate any additional changes to our budget. So we have a, if there are assessments, let's say, in order to get potable water, you know, this is how much it would cost. So we don't have to make a budget amendment later and we can plan for it. Or if we want to do a switch for solar or things like that, so. All right. Anything else, counsel? Right, and just as, you know, it certainly encourages members of the community to, you know, prepare for wildfires, you know, the more we can do in terms of, you know, this type of workshop, but also just in terms of our interactions with the public. Obviously, we're in under kind of stressful conditions right now with the drought conditions and we want to make sure that we're as prepared as we can be, so. All right. So counsel, we're gonna take a five minute break and then we'll start our normal council session. Oh, Mayor Potem?
I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor, I was thinking about this coloring book. Years ago, the kids, they used to do one calendar. And it was nice. Why we don't propose to the, to the school if they can give it to them, this kind of this of calendar? Because they are from the Austin Independent School and will be free for the kids. And in that way, minimum, they can start thinking and asking their parents.
Yeah, I think that that tradition was something that was really fun, you know, it's in terms of like being able to engage with the school and kind of bring it back. It, you know, lapsed because of COVID and some of the conditions there, but I would, I'd love to see that continued in some fashion if we can do, whether it's the community coordinator that might be able to help with that. But certainly, you know, making sure that we have, that is a discussion topic if we want to, if the school would want to partner with us. I know that previous art teacher, Ms., Kim Monkis was, she's still there, well, and she may have retired. I had to double check, yeah, she, but.
That was for firefighters, so I'll see if there's.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. But that's a good outreach point for the school since we used to do that, so, thanks. All right, so I'm gonna close the meeting at 5:57 PM. And council will resume at just a little bit after six, so people can take a break and get back to the regular meeting. All right. The time is 6:04 PM. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Tuesday, June 7th, 2022. And before we begin with our agenda, I do want to say it's with great sorrow that the news that I heard this morning or just now, that Dr. Browning, one of our longtime community members, passed away. And he's obviously been a volunteer with the city for years and a vital part of our community. And so certainly wish him, his family well in this time and very sad news to pass along. I also, just also wanted just to, you know, recognize another probably, you know, object that's, you know, bringing some, some more color and life into our community, which is, I know that the work was completed recently on the utility box for the art project. And I wanted to highlight that if you drive by Westgate now, there's actually a beautiful mural that's been painted on the utility box intended to, you know, discourage the graffiti that was so prevalent on that, but also I think bring a measure, a marker to our city that's welcoming. And I think it was, you know, beautifully chosen and it looks really nice. So thank you for the community that put that together and Counselor Johnson for leading that, so appreciate that. With that, we're gonna open for citizen public communication and members of the public that wish to speak at this time, please go ahead.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26, Reese. Thanks for all the really good discussion during the work session. I think that this is kind of a, I agree with almost everything that was said by council. I think it's important discussion, but there's some paradox here that I think we need to pay attention to about what makes us special. And I'm concerned, you know, holding at the same time the importance of what we were discussing, but the paradox of climate change. And when we talk about the unique position that Sunset Valley is in to be a model for soil conservation and wildlife that keeps our, that prevents the whole creating of desert, which is what we're really struggling with, that is the biggest fire thing. It's a long range plan that we need to kind of pay attention to at the same time as we do the micro thing. So you can say, let's clear everything out. When you do that, you lead towards creating desert. And so there has to be a balance about that. And people who sometimes are educated in fire are not necessarily educated in that particular soil preservation. And so I think we need to be aware that we're not creating a long term problem, addressing a short term problem. And it's some of the things that I know that P and E has started to talk about doing education in the community about. And so I just want to, you know, that there is a save our soil movement that I think is really important. And it's something that is very in keeping with what the values of our community are. And I just want to make sure that doesn't get trampled in our desire to stay safe, which I think is also very important. So I just want to remind you to hold both things. I'm a little concerned about the switch to the central Texas because there's so many things that are local to us, especially in flooding. So I just want to make sure that we have a robust system because it's middle of the night, 2:00 AM, that our previous alarm sessions would go out and say, yes, you really do have to get out of your house now if you're gonna get out. And we've had that happen. So I think that's important for those of us who live in the floodplown areas, that we still have a very strong system for that. And a text is gonna get your behind out of bed. So that's just a concern that I have because flooding is a real issue. That is, that is pretty much my stuff, so thank you all very much.
Thank you. Any other residents, members of the public wish to speak? We're gonna move on to agenda number three, which is staff reports, beginning with the administration report.
Good evening, mayor and council. Just wanted to go highlight a few items on the admin report. If you have any questions about the professional services fees report or the permitting report, Sylvia or Susannah is available. For projects ongoing, obviously budget preparation, staff is working on that. The Budget and Finance Committee is working. Community coordinator position, we have two interviews scheduled for this week, so we're looking forward to that, hopefully finding a great candidate to fill that position. Just wanted to mention that LaserFISH Document Management System, which council approved a few months ago, we are now starting to implement that. Staff internally, I have a lot of training to do myself and with staff, but kind of moving away from keeping files on the server and uploading files to the website and using LaserFISH as our, you know, kind of comprehensive document management system. And we do have an intern with us the two weeks, Carrie Collins, she's already begun uploading council agenda packets and minutes. We have, she, I think she's already worked through like four years of council agendas and minutes. And we'll have some other interns throughout the summer and staff trying to get everything from the old website onto the new website. But if council does, I included a kind of a how to, if you want to access documents or pages from the old website, it's sunsetvalley.city. And then occasionally you'll come across a page where it doesn't work and all you have to do is replace the dot city, or sorry, the dot org with dot city and it will populate the page. Yeah, so you can call me later if you're having problems accessing the old website, but hopefully, and once we do have the repository more populated, I will do tutorials on how to access files on LaserFISH and search and find things. It's gonna be a lot, lot easier to search through all the hundreds of documents that we have. And then back to the admin report, upcoming meetings, I wanted to highlight two. On next, next Wednesday evening, I believe at 6:00 PM, there will be a community meeting here at City Hall. Asakura Robinson will be present and they will be going over the parks and open space plan. And right now, there is a survey. We have sent out, there's a digital survey and we also have paper copies of the survey at the Public Works and Admin Building if residents would prefer to fill out a paper copy, but please encourage everyone, all the residents to complete that survey. And then later in the month, we're gonna have a Saturday workshop. It's gonna be a joint meeting with the Arts Commission, the CED Committee and the P and E Committee. And this is gonna be an opportunity to talk about projects and planning for the next fiscal year and if there's any projects that these three committees may be able to collaborate on our intersections as we're talking about branding and beautification projects. So if there's a way to, you know, coordinate efforts so that the three committees aren't, you know, working by themselves or siloed, so we're looking forward to that workshop.
Before going to council, I was gonna ask, so for the LaserFISH, I know we're in the process of migrating records and when it's, when it goes live as a portal for access for accessing those documents, just in terms of our contract, do we have an unlimited access to it? We don't have to create like special, you know, special accounts to access it or is that going to be something that I'm just kind of curious, I don't remember exactly how it was set up in our contract.
So the the public portal is, yeah, you do not have to create a username. That's that's one thing that we definitely wanted to to not have. So it is, it is a completely public portal. You don't have to have a login.
Great.
But I have to, if we're if if that is where all of the future agendas and packets are going to live, actually just speaking with Councilmember Johnson, but we just have to make sure because right now everything in the public portal is just, it's, it's a viewer. So you can't actually download. So that wouldn't be helpful, you know, for council or for people that really get into the packets because right now it's just, it's great for searching and you can view it, but you at this moment, if it lives on the public portal, you can't, the public can't download it as a PDF.
Do we have, is that an option that we that we'd have to extend?
We will have to, well, we're going to, I'm going to do some training and and hopefully we can figure that out.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Proten.
I went with all of these questions before with you, Matt, and you explained to me now is a step by a step that I can be doing. In reality, I am a user of the computer. I I I don't know too much about computers, but in the old times, the website was very simple for me. Maybe for other people was obsolete, but for me was very simple and I used to find all the information. When we were agree to improve that, I agree. But now I don't see the improvements if I don't see the past. So we have a lot of information and I cannot see that information. It's easy to say if you follow these steps, you will do that. But it's very difficult if I have to change, if I if I have to check maybe 20 or 30 files looking for something and in each of them I have to do these steps. First, they don't pay me. I am doing this voluntary. This is the first thing. Second, I want to find something because was there because I saw that before. Third, I I think that I tried to use this for simple, not for difficult for me. At this moment, it's very, very difficult and the same than I, I think than a lot of people is in the same way.
Yeah, so the the illustration, the sunsetvalley.city and that illustration that you just that you just referenced, that is a stopgap while we are implementing the Laserfish, the document management system and repository. So eventually you won't go to sunsetvalley.city. That's that site will, I mean, it'll be their legacy, but you should not need to use that site anymore. And also, I don't know if you ever tried to search on the old website, but I mean, it was so difficult to to search. The Laserfish, because everything is uploaded as OCR, so like everything is text readable. So you'll be able to really narrow and, you know, define your searches. So it should be, you know, much easier to access all the information that we have, you know, all the going back all the way to 2007 when we started uploading documents on the internet. So that this example of how to access the old website, that is a stopgap until we have the the Laserfish repository implemented. And we're already, you know, we've already got four years of council. So by the summer, end of the summer, we should have all of the documents uploaded and and we will, staff will, you know, train council and and create tutorials that we can post on our website to show residents how to use the the new repository.
Yeah. Look, maybe you are right. At this moment, I don't see that and they can tell me then will be very easy. I hope that that would be very easy, but at this moment is no easy because I cannot see that. And I I don't want to use the same line, but it's the same when I am working with OpenGov. In OpenGov, only I can see files and only I can go and check that files. But I I I am not working in finance and I know I know need to go from there, take the file in Excel and pass to Excel and then make my my equation in Excel. I I don't know if the idea at the beginning with finance was that somebody was taking all the information and pass to OpenGov in one way, but I don't see all of that. And they can tell me so easy if you are doing this and this and that, but it's not easy because it's so many things. And I hope that in the same way will be easy for us to go in that way because looking, for example, this moment, the budget, we we used to spend $92,000 in all of these programs and this and that. And in reality, I I don't see the easy way of how we accomplish. I think that if we need to spend more money, in reality, we need to look something that would be simple for people, then we are not working with that computers because we learn to some level of computers, but other people, they have more capacity and other people, they don't use that, only go with the flow. But I hope that if we approve programs, in reality, they will be simple for everybody. We don't have one elite. I think that is is the community and for the community, we have to have transparency. A transparency means that will be easy to go and check all the information in the past. It's true, we start in 2007 and some of that files, they were only photocopies, but was something, was some reference that sometimes is very, very important. So please, if we approve another programs or if we have these and we say that we are with transparency, we need to look that to the public and would be easy for them to check that, please take that in consideration.
And Matt, even before we have our complete transfer files, would it be useful to kind of to go give a demo of Laserfish and and the capabilities maybe at one of the upcoming council sessions, just to spend some time?
Yeah, maybe at a future work session, if we have some time, I can.
Yeah.
I want to get some more documents uploaded so, you know, but then and I too have to do do my own research on a few issues that have come up. But yeah, maybe in a maybe in July, we can do a work session and tutorial on how to how to use it.
Because when I remember when I used it, it was very easy. Well, it was very powerful, I should say, you know, in terms of like I didn't do a very robust search, but it was very much, you know, much more powerful than our old website as far as that.
Correct, correct.
Okay. Any other questions for the administration report? Moving on to Public Works.
I don't know if the council has met Dakota Burns, who is our superintendent in Public Works. He's been with us a little while now, but I think this is the first time he's actually presenting at council.
Yeah, so my name is Dakota Burns. I've been here for just a little bit over two months now. I think I've met almost everybody on council. So but originally I came from the city of San Marcos. Before that, I was with the city of Buta. And I grew up in Cincinnati, Ohio, so I'm a little bit of ways from where I grew up. But enjoying Sunset Valley and glad to be here and kind of assist in whatever needs to be done. So on our staff report, one thing is we purchased the generator for the lift station and for any other items that we need to power as in backup. We began the City Hall repairs and the AV installation this week. And the lift station has been cleaned and capacitors were changed. And also another item would be that there has been damage to the council ring that we kind of need to at some point discuss on what to do with that. So it was a hit and run accident, so we don't know who hit it and we just kind of need to rebuild it at some point. The little council ring outside of our building.
Councilmember Lewisfield.
I've asked Carolyn a couple of times about this, but, excuse me, maybe this would be a really nice opportunity to make a trail in front of or a path in front of City Hall and like this buildings complex. Since we're going to be moving rocks around anyway, maybe just move a couple to the side and cut a little path that would make my life much better. Thanks.
Yeah, and actually the one of the things I think that Matt or you, Dakota, when we talked, we're going to go back and research is the the history of the council ring because, you know, it's, it's, it goes back to dedication back in 1998, 97, when Michael Francis, I think, was probably mayor around that timeframe. And there's, when we did the buildings and build it out, we had an option of moving it and the price tag was $10,000 to move it to another place. And we decided at the time that let's just keep it in place. And then, of course, it's, you know, become a little bit of a hazard, I guess, for some driver that like jumped the curb. I think it's an opportunity as far as to both, you know, maybe honor the history in some way, but also I don't think that's the appropriate place for it. And we have an opportunity to relocate it as far as, you know, making it if if we want to do that. But I think that's something we want to get some more information from the people that were here when they built it and where it could be moved to in addition to maybe making trails more accessible on that side of the road, so. Mayor Proten.
I think that we need to be careful because if you remember now soon we'll have elections and that was one point for election, that you will remove for $10,000, yes and no. And it was tough at that time, so be careful with that.
Well, if we, yeah, it's not going to be paid for by the driver's insurance because we can't find the driver, so it's a question of will we do rebuild it or rebuild it somewhere less safer, you know, but I'll go ahead, Dakota, please.
Yeah, me.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, maybe we could get a some historical perspective on it because from my standpoint, it doesn't seem like that's a good use of our money, but I I don't maybe understand the historical perspective. So if that could be given just as a little bit better for better decision making.
Well, that's the thing, I mean, part of the my understanding in the context is the the placing it there was also before we did the rerouting of the road and then it became it became less of a valuable or it imbued with less of a sort of privacy sense and the sort of the the reason it was there because the road right now is right next to it. But that's if the intent was to make sort of this ring of, you know, kind of, you know, contemplation and things like that, it's not the best place for it right now. So so, Councilmember Johnson.
I haven't seen the electrical panel over at the farmer's market. We we noticed that the it's a project, the but I just wanted to get that listed here. So when we were running Arts Fest, we had vendors plugging into this panel that's over over there where the farmer's market and Arts Fest run. And a bunch of the outlets didn't work and the ones that did work were.
Absolute liability, potential fire hazard.
Fire hazard, there's, there was like a crazy number of ants on it. So, yeah, let's get that into the list of things.
Yeah, that's on the list of things for the contractor that's doing the AV upgrades as well as the the switch for these buildings is to give us kind of a general idea of what it's going to cost to repair down there at the where Art Fest was and that panel, just to get it more weatherproof as well.
Yeah, I, you know, it doesn't have to look great, but right now it's just a piece of plywood with some like plugs on it.
Yeah, I mean, ideally it'd be able to be locked up so we don't have people using the power that's, you know, provided right there just out of ease of use.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Public Works?
So I did, I know you've seen the electrical, so the building's also going to get a paint job in the next couple of weeks. By the time you come back for your July meetings, all of this should be complete and up and running, so bear with us, but your next council meeting, things will be off the wall. I think once you see the wall color is the one to the right.
The right side.
Yes, that's the wall color. Works in with our branding and so you'll begin to see City Hall take some light and you may make a different decision about not painting the lobby.
It's called Navajo White is the color. Just the color that the sample said, so that's what it is.
It looks like drywall gray.
Thank you, and moving on to public safety.
Officer Brownlow, get up, get up here.
So council, if there's any questions for that you saw in the public safety report, you know, ask the city administrator or we can follow up with chief. Thank you. All right, so let's move on to item number four, presentation by Sunset Valley Arts Commission on Arts Fest 2022. And I think, Michelle, you're going to be giving our presentation since Karen is unavailable tonight.
I'm on, I'm on. Yeah, Karen can be here tonight, so I'm just trying to fill in and give everybody a little bit of a recap on what happened at Art Fest this year. Thank you. And Matt has some slides for us that you can take a look at as I kind of run through this. Basically, it was really a great Art Fest this year. It's been operating for 14 years. We had seven, an estimate of 7,856 people come to the event. We were thinking around 7,000, so it's a little bit more and actually I think it's still a bit more than that. That was just from doing our counter or person clicking that we were doing to try to get a better estimate this year, which was great. The adventure build came back this year, which was wonderful and had about 1,000 participants, they tell us, over in that area of the of the festival. And it was nice to be back after a couple of years of not being here because of COVID. I was, you know, not knowing how it was going to be this first year back with people wanting to be out and that kind of thing. But I'm so happy to report that we had 93 vendors this year, which is phenomenal. We usually average around 70 to 72 every year, so it was a huge jump for us and it was, it was really nice. So we had about 93 vendors in all different types of art areas, crafts, things like that, sculpture. And let's see, the basically the adventure build there is about 1,000 participants. That was a really popular area and they did keep it on for the next weekend as well just so that people, you know, they could take advantage of that during the next farmer's market session as well. And I want to personally thank all the people from the city council and Public Works and staff and everybody who who really volunteers this year because we had a lot more volunteers than we usually do, who come together because it really was a very fun festival and we needed all the help that we got from all the volunteers. We had about 80 hours of city staff and crew involvement. It was wonderful to have Public Works helping us do a little bit more this year. That was so, we're so appreciative of that. We obviously go into Art Fest every year knowing that there can always be improvements and we try to look at those things and see what those are and keep it growing every year. When I first came on board with Art Fest, there was a little bitty stage and we just had a, we had a couple of folk art, you know, bands, but it's moved a long way from when it was here and then it went over there and then it's just grown and grown and grown. So I think it's something that Sunset Valley can be proud of and a lot of the vendors really do look forward to coming every year, so that's nice. As far as overall on some of the surveys that we got back, we always do a survey to the vendors every year. This year, we did one to the volunteers as well because we did have a lot of volunteers. We wanted their feedback on what worked, were they trained, did they understand, that kind of thing. We have some wonderful examples here of feedback from the vendors, which, like I said, we get every year. And we do ask them some very specific questions about how they heard about us, was the time good, you know, was it good for a one day event, you know, those types of things. And we always get, again, great feedback from our vendors on that. And we take a look at all of that, good and bad, if there is any bad, and just kind of try to work anything in that we can to improve it for the next year. There's a great shot in here, Matt, I don't know if you can show the overview, the aerial view? I don't know where, yeah. So that's basically kind of the way it looked this year. The parking was, we used a new parking company this year and but we had a very organized flow of the vendors coming in, the parking, it just really seemed to work out well, especially coming back after two years and working with a lot more different people, a new parking staffing company and whatnot. But that's kind of what it looked like. We also worked with the new pilot program that the council approved for us to work with, with the sponsor program. So we got Home Depot was our big sponsor, our platinum sponsor, and then we worked with Central Market, West Gate, which is phenomenal. And And then we had Doc's Backyard Grill and Texas Scapes also. And I noticed that the West, the Central Market, Westgate, they took the little plates where they had the kids, because they had a booth at the event. The plates where they had the kids draw and do an art project, basically. And they put them on the armadillo in front of the store, so they really promoted us after the event as well. And they took pictures of it. It was really, it was really cute. So they were very happy to be involved, definitely want to come back next year. All the sponsors were very happy with the way everything went. So we're looking forward to hopefully working with them next year and possibly some other sponsors, so. So this is basically some thank yous we did at the event and our stage lineups for both of the stages. Another thing we did, which was kind of fun this year, just as a side note, is on the kid's stage, we did an open mic session, I guess. And we tried to promote it to the schools, to the band teachers and, you know, get it out that way. We put it on the website, we put it on our social media and that kind of thing. And it was really nice because we had several kids sign up for that and they had a blast. It was really a lot of fun. So I hope that we, you know, want to bring that back again next year. It was a really good segment and really popular for a lot of different kids. So, let's see. A lot of Matt, I think after this, we just have basically some Q and As from the volunteer and from the vendor surveys? Or Sylvia, I don't know who. Or do we go through those already? But basically, like I said, overall, it was just a real success. I was just really happy about it, looking forward to trying to, you know, make improvements, make it even bigger and better for 2023. You know, it's, it's being fine tuned as it's gotten bigger. We did lay it out a little bit differently this year, which I think was a real positive on the pods that we had. It made traffic flow better, but in doing so, we also learned some lessons on things, you know, we need to do next year to help with some directionals and that kind of thing, so. But that's really it. The, the one thing about the budget is I always have tried, I've been working for 10 years now to do Art Fest. And I've always tried to really come on budget with this event because our budgets, that's what we had. But this year, I was really concerned because we, about the rebranding that you guys have done through, for the city and the logos and that kind of thing. But we thought we were going to need a little bit more extra money and we got y'all to approve another $7,000 in the budget. As it came down, when we reconciled at the end of May, we were actually in a surplus of $588, I believe, so we really didn't need that money. And that was based on the fact that there was a Cintex staffing that we didn't use this year. Some things came in under budget than what they had given me budgets on, so it just kind of all worked out. So I was very happy about that. We would suggest that, we would like to propose that for that $7,000, that we keep that for now. Use that for the pre-planning that we start this year, because we start that in July. So July, August, and September in this fiscal year, we use those funds to start, you know, getting the date, getting that out, you know, that kind of thing, getting, getting things set up. And then anything left over would go back to the hot fund for the rest of the balance, so. That's really all I have unless I have any questions from any of you guys.
Well, congratulations on the successful event.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the members of the staff and councils and residents that participated. And reading through the feedback, you can see that everybody had a great experience. Or there's, by and large, there's very positive feedback from the people that participated in the survey and really appreciate the coordination they put together. Are there questions, Michelle? Councilor Reitz?
So it was a really fun event and so thank you for all your help and all the work involved with it. So how many were artist vendors out of the nine, was it 90 something?
Eighty-four, eighty-four.
That's a good jump, because I think before it was around 65 or something, something like that.
Around 70 is kind of a good average.
Yeah, so that's a nice jump, so. So the one thing that I'd like to see, and Karen Metekas, when she was on council, committed to doing this. I haven't seen any plan and that is to look at moving it to our downtown area versus burger parking lot. And I haven't seen any plans. I met with Sylvia and we kind of did a preliminary, how would, how would this work? And we kind of went through, you know, a pretty quick and dirty analysis of how, where, where all the tents could go, everything could go. And I want the Arts Commission to look at that and see if we can make that happen. Because I think if you truly want to make this our signature event for this city, it has to be downtown. And that, I think you will have much more, many more sponsors because our festival goers will go to the restaurants and around besides just the food trucks and stuff, so there'll be many more options. And I think it could be a pretty fabulous event, so.
Okay. I know that Karen is talking with Sylvia and the Arts Commission's taking a look.
Yeah, okay, good.
You bet.
I saw Rudy's hand up. Councilor Rosengard, did you want to ask a question?
Some people talked about starting it later because one of them comes from San Antonio and then staying later. And then there's the conversation about two days versus one day, security issues and so on. How would you address any of that?
Basically, we, we are kind of taking a look at the timeframe, maybe a little bit, maybe a 10 to 6 timeframe, so it gets, starts a little bit later. It's realistic for when people would set up in the morning. And then it would go a little bit later in the afternoon, so we still catch people. And the two-day event, I know that the commission's looking at that as well. Myself, from an event planner standpoint, is we really need to look at what that would be and give it maybe a year of planning because, maybe another year of planning because you just don't want to go and have like another event or another thing until you really research it. Because there's costs involved, there's electricity, there's just a lot that goes with it. So I think still, you know, looking at fine tuning this event would still be good and depending on the location of the event. And then look at that next. You know, a lot of our vendors would still come back for a one-day event. Some would like to, but a lot of people are very happy with the one-day event. If we did want it to grow and move the location or stay at the same location, definitely look at something else for a second day down the road.
Mayor Proten.
Yeah, Michelle, I was reading about the, that question already and everybody is so, so happy. So that sounds very good. They say that they were over 7,800 people that they attend and 93 vendors. So with all of that density of population, how was the parking in that place? Is okay the parking or what do you think that is important, the parking, in order to create that kind of event?
It, I think it went really well this year. You know, we basically have great parking for handicaps, so that's taken care of. We did have the COVID tent that was over there this year, which we haven't had before. And so we kind of had to reroute people coming in from the 290 location where the sign is there for the stadium. But that worked out okay. We had plenty of parking for everyone. And we had better directionals this year, you know, out in the, in the parking lot, so I didn't get a lot of complaints on parking.
No. So I was looking because when I saw that picture, that means the density that you have to have. Because that gave it to you the magnitude of this event. So congratulations, this sold out nicely.
Oh, thank you, thank you. We had a lot of help with our parking people in different positions, but, but yeah, I thought it worked. Overall, it works very well, but thank you.
Yeah, yeah, well, when you have 92 vendors and you see that area, they are using all the north of the parking. And then all the left side, the amount of cars, 7,000 people, maybe four people per car.
Yeah, and coming and going all day.
In and out, in and out, so that was, but thank you very much.
You bet. Thank you so much.
And just a quick question because I didn't, and the numbers, the 93 does not include the farmer's market that was also concurrent, right? So they also had their own vendors that were.
Yeah, and they had, I think this year they had about 20, 25 or something around there that stay until 1 o'clock. But yeah, the 93 that we had was just ours, 85 of that, 84, 85 of that being art vendors, the rest were food trucks. And we're always trying to get, you know, more food trucks to come out, so always learning on that end, so.
Councilor Johnson.
Thank you for everything you did. It was awesome and.
Thank you.
And as I was running through, people were just saying, they're like, this is so well organized.
Yeah.
The, first of all, he ran out, but Officer Brownlow with his, he was doing this once an hour. So he, the officer that was here a minute ago, then he ran out. So wanted to thank him again for, for doing that. For parking, again, with like the COVID tents over there, at one point, when I had to go home in the middle of the day to nap, because we were there at like 4:00 AM. But we, we did run out of parking and so Chief Carter was having people park like in between the uplands and the, the elementary, like, so it was kind of, it's kind of awesome to see that we had so many people that we were finding alternate parking situations. The only, the only thing I heard as a negative from people, and I know because you and I were working on it, was the, the food vendors that have generators.
Yes.
And so like, I think getting that board fixed and being able to like pump out enough amps so that they can run their, the hot place, their fryer. I, I've never worked in a kitchen before. So everything that they had in there, they had to have their generator and all the art vendors were just like.
Yeah, and, and we're, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that, that was it, but it was like literally the only thing I heard.
Yeah, and the thing with, with generators is when you work with the food trucks is a lot of them have the silent, quiet generators or it's installed kind of as part of their truck ensemble. So when we had the Heroes people down there who've been with us for about 10 years, they have one, you just don't hear it. I've had other people that you just don't hear. Orin's, the barbecue guy, just happened to have his on the back end of his. So that's something we'll deal with him on next year to make that not happen.
Well, the, the chicken guys also.
Oh, yeah, because they didn't have their food truck yet, so theirs was a little loud. I just need to go through and make sure and really work with each one of the food vendors individually and make sure what their setup needs to be and make sure that it's consistent with what we need for setup. And anything that we could have electricity-wise offered on that panel will be a big help too, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, council, move on to item number five. Council consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve on consent agenda items number six, work session and minutes on May 17th with corrections sent in. Agenda item number seven, JDRF walk. Agenda item number eight, information technology support services. Agenda item number nine, denying bids for Stern's Lane lift station. That's it.
Okay, council, there's a motion to approve on consent items number six, seven, eight, and nine. Does anybody want to remove any of those items? Mayor Proten?
I would like to discuss number nine.
Okay, so we'll remove number nine. Any other removals? Councilor Johnson?
I just have one question about number seven.
All right, let's go ahead and remove it. So we've got six and eight. All right, is there a second for that motion to approve on consent, item number six and eight?
Second.
All right, second. All those in favor approving on consent, item number six and number eight, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, so that, that means we approved on consent, item number six, consider an act on approval of minutes with, from the May 17th, 2022, 22 regular meeting and work session with corrections as submitted by Councilor Rosengard. And item number eight, consider an act on approval request for proposals for informational technology support services. That brings us to item number seven, question from Councilor Johnson for the temporary special use permit for JDRF.
Correct. The, the only question I had, well, maybe it's two and one. So the last time we had JDRF was what year?
2019.
Okay. This past year, we had the Daisy Dash and they're, they're going to be submitting that it's the week, weekend before.
The week before, yes. They have not, yeah, they have not submitted, have they submitted? Yeah, they haven't submitted their temporary special use permit, but they have, they've given us the date. So it's a week, it's the week prior. But I believe, so JDRF is a Sunday and I believe that Daisy Dash is a Saturday? Wait, no.
It's the 24th and the 30th, so there.
I don't think it's the 24th, the 24th would be a Monday. So is it the 23rd or 22nd? Anyways, but it is the weekend prior to JDRF.
Right, so when we have one event, we kind of hear about it. And then if we do two weekends in a row, I personally want both of these events to go on. I think it's great to pull people in to our community and I'm just, you know, what it was our, was our plan to, I don't know, to have two events? Weeks, two weeks back, back to back. I'm going to run in it and I'll, and also walk, but so it's just like, I'm going to be involved in both of them and, you know, I live on Jones. I don't, I don't particularly see it being difficult.
Well, I think both of, both of these events are a little bit different than the graduation because we're in charge of the traffic plan. We really weren't in charge of that and so the cluster that it became is the cluster that it became. But at last year's Daisy Dash, we didn't have very many complaints. It was set up early and done early. By the time folks were even cognizant that it was going on, it was over. So their plan is still to have it very early in the day. The JDRF is larger, is a larger event, so chief does work on an extended traffic and safety plan for it soon.
They have, they have listed as 5,000 people. The one that I walked in last was not that big. And so they can put down whatever, but, so with that, it's coming. So I just wanted us to like have a plan to kind of message it.
Yeah, and so you mean as, you want to, you want to make sure that both events are promoted, is that? Or, and that residents are aware that it's happening, so.
Yeah, and it's, I think the neighborhood affects the most is probably the Villas. Because both of those walks and runs make it a little bit difficult to get out of, to get out of there. Down on Jones, I don't think it matters much for us. But I, I'll bring it up again once it gets closer, but.
Right.
With that, I'll probably motion to approve a temporary special use permit for JDRF to hold their one-walk event at 3,200 Jones Road on October 30th, 2022.
Right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Oh, a second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, the motion passes, the temporary special use permits approved. Moving on to item number nine, consider act on denying all bids for Stern's Lane Lift Station rehabilitation project. And we'll start with Mayor Proten, since you wanted to pull this item from consent, if you have a question for staff.
Yes, Sylvia, can you bring that? Please, thank you. Okay, I think that members of this council, this is a very important point. When we were talking about this lift station, we came to around $214,000. And with the bids, the companies, then they proposed to do the job. One of them is $900,000, $600,000, $480,000, $440,000. And the estimate that we had was 210, 214. So when we asked to the engineers if they were doing the, the estimates, why they were so, so low? And now with the proposed, proposal, they are so high. They say that it's with the time, that at this moment, everything is more expensive. But if it's very more expensive, we are looking almost double this project. So for me, when we started CIP, we started in one and a half million dollars. So for me, it's critical at this moment to evaluate how much they estimate. Because if not one and a half, will be three. Are you familiar with that, Sylvia? What is your opinion?
So construction costs are just out of control. They're, they're out of control in our area and we, as a municipality, are not able to put in cost escalators because we do go through a formal bid process. In the private sector, you have contract clauses that have bid escalators where the prices can raise as commodities change. We don't have that, so the contractors are hedging that their bid is high enough to cover any increases in material. It may not cost them that and if it doesn't, their profit margin is really great. But if it costs more than that, they don't have an ability to really give us a change order without a change in scope. They can't come back to tell us, price has increased so much, so I need a, I need a change order if the scope hasn't changed. So that is some of what we're feeling. So that is some of what we're feeling. Some of the, the reason as we went through this, some of the things they're recommending, for example, that water line. It, it's a $15,000 cost for a minimal line that we're going to take it as a training opportunity and probably build it in-house. So, but we can't do any of those scope changes or, or scope review until all of the bids are denied because we have a bid on the table right now that we need to contemplate.
Yep, so looking at this moment, we, we cannot approve that because it's too, too much. But we have the one opportunity at this moment that we need to check with the engineers which projects, because at this moment, we don't have nothing ready. Most of the projects, they have only engineering. So at this moment, they produce the design, but we don't, we, we, we didn't work with the construction. So when we will start with the bids for construction, if they will jump in that way, that will be critical. So I think that is important, then the, the engineers, they will reevaluate and let us know how. So in that way, we will know what we will expect because at this moment, that is the condition. We cannot approve this because we need more analysis. And in addition, uh, I, I think that in some areas, we need to have, we need to find another routes. Let, let me explain. The engineer, he can say this is the scope, but maybe you can request so many things. Sometimes we need a little more analysis, what do they request? So in that way, to find the value, the best value. When I was looking, the concept of some things, so some controls, $200,000 now. So what do they expect to have with a, a simple electrical control over $200,000? So if they, if, if they request that in that specs, this is the proposal. So I think that we need to have another eyes, then they will review that in order, because as a city, as a staff has one job to do the, to do some of the activities. But as, I represent the citizen and I need to look that fiscal responsibility. And if at this moment, the engineers, they were doing the design, but in the second phase construction, that will go three times the proposed, I will be bad if I don't check a second opinion or something. This is the critical point that I say here, Mr. Mayor and everybody.
Councilor Lischfield?
Yeah, I'd like to, I guess second what Councilmember Carmona was saying. I appreciate the rejecting the bid and the countermeasures described, they look great. Good job, guys. It brings me back to the, the, the problem is less that because it's the public sector, we don't have like escalation clauses within a project. It's that this project is three years in from when we kind of made the initial bid or estimate. Which, you know, like sure, things take time. But then that calls into question a lot of the pre-engineering work that we did for the CIP where there's, you know, we invested a bunch of money from the engineers that is going to be completely nonsense. Like we need to throw those numbers away because the world is different now. At one, like you could make a compelling argument that probably none of the future bids are going to come in anywhere near where they thought it would, you know, a year and a half ago. So I don't know what actionable to do about that except to maybe just take those numbers that we have from the engineers, from like the pre thing and just write them in crayon instead of ink. And then just say that like, this is a wild guess from a couple of years ago, but just not kind of marry ourselves to them. Or just know that like we should reassess like at the date, like right at the date, but don't spend another dollar today. Like relooking at those, uh, projects that we might do in two years. Um, I guess it just like puts a lot of, uh, error, like the margin of error in those numbers is now very, very large. So let's just be careful when we budget on that front. Thanks.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, again, at this moment, this number nine is simple, we can reject. But I think that we need to provide instruction to the city administrator, to be working with the engineers. And they need to reevaluate seriously what happened and what will happen. And if it will be necessary, a second opinion, we need to have that second opinion. Because, uh, Mayor, I think that that would be high, high, high. We didn't have the experience at this moment because nothing is in construction. All is in the design and we pay the design. So that is my critical point. Thank you.
Councilor Rosengard?
In the backup, it says staff will determine which parts of the project can be constructed through alternative means and which parts of the project will be self-performed. Public Works Department is also proposing additional funds within the wastewater operations budget for 2223 to create a management plan for the lift station and the entire wastewater system to maintain this infrastructure and prolong its lifespan. Dakota, do you wish to add anything? Is there anything different than what we're reading is going to happen?
No, and that's exactly right. We're going to kind of evaluate and go through there and see which projects that we can do ourselves, self-perform and save us a little bit of money. And then, you know, kind of go from there on that. And yes, we will be needing to add some more money to the budget to continue our, uh, cleaning of the lift station and put, uh, new lift station baskets in, which are catching a lot of the debris that's coming from the hotel. So before they go to the pumps and stuff. So just kind of preventative maintenance on the lift station is really key in this part, um, which we are constantly doing. We're always going out there every week checking our pumps, making sure they're not overdrawing on amps. Um, and making sure that if, because if they're high on amps, we need to pull a pump, clean it and then put it back in. And then, you know, kind of repeat the process the next week and just keep, keep an eye on things.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, again, we don't come back to two years ago. We start two years ago, how they were doing the things, cleaning, cleaning the screen, doing this, doing that. So at this moment, the only proposal is to continue cleaning and cleaning. And this is not the solution. We pay good money to do something. Two years ago, we start with this. And now obviously everything changed. But in this case, we don't need to send this to the staff. We need to go to another level, engineering. This is why. The idea is the pumps that he has at this moment, they are not working properly. And they say you cannot change the pumps. You can't, you have to replace these pumps with the special pumps. So after that is so much money. You have to change this, you have to change that. For me, this is no engineering because I don't have a solution. The solution is keep going, cleaning, maintenance. So this is then we were working before and this is not then the idea that we have when we start with the CIP. So please put attention, it's not to put a bandit. So patch, no, we need to find solutions and this is why we pay.
So I think the solution is that once we can deny all bids, we can actually go out to companies that we can have, that are on byboard that will already provide us with a service that is at, you know, a government rate instead of, like Sylvia said, there's no escalation clause. So they're putting, you know, 50% padding on their bids and they could get the product at less, they could get the product at more. They could lose up to 25% or more of what, you know, they need. So I think that's kind of our thought behind this and our recommendation is that we just deny the bids and we can go forward with reaching out to companies, uh, that are on byboard for our, our pumps.
Councilor Rosengard?
I move to approve and act on denying all bids for the Sterns Lane Lift Station Rehab Project so Public Works can then evaluate the next step. Thank you.
So motion to deny the bids, is there a second? Open it up for discussion?
Yeah, I will second.
All right.
I go for discussion?
Yes, and now we can have discussion. The motion on the table is to deny the bids. Um, and any further discussion on council before we move to public input? Since we have one member of the public which is to speak. Please go ahead, Melissa.
Melissa Gonzalez, 26th Rees, also on Public Works, also on council when this started. And at the time on council, I just, I just want a little perspective, just in case people weren't here. Daniel wanted to fix this for around 35K, you know, back then and just as an in-house deal. He, he had a patch, which isn't to say that I don't think that Councilmember Rosengard's solution is a good solution. But I also think it's important to notice how much money we spent, which isn't to say that all of it shouldn't have been spent, but some of it, I think, is questionable. And I, and I just want to flag it, right? I'm, I'm not saying, I, I, I'm not in a position to do a whole rehash on it, but that's a lot of shift. Some of it we needed to do and I'm not sure all of it we needed to do. And I, I'm not sure it needed to take as long as it did, which is why we, we are where we are. So that's just my opinion from having washed it for a really long time. And I think that that shouldn't be ignored totally. I'm not saying we have to do anything about it, but I think we should observe and that's my two cents. Thank you.
Any other members of vote which should speak to this item? Any further discussion, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, well, I agree with that motion, but we need to add something to that motion. And I would like to add that at this moment, they need to reevaluate the projects. Then at this moment, we pay for engineering because there are three or four projects that we pay. We pay engineering over $148,000. So what is the second phase? If they will be able to cover construction with the estimate that they, they made or how much that will be? So because, okay, months ago, this project, this project, this project. And we agreed three or four projects, engineering, and we approved that. We pay for that engineering, but now they came to the phase of construction. They need to do the bids, request for proposals, et cetera. So, Mr. Mayor, then I say this, we cannot let this in this way and in two months coming back. I think that at this moment, our administrator needs to check with them, all that I said previously. They need to check if that will be able to do the, the construction projects or we need to estimate a little more money or who needs to do that. But again, uh, the citizen Melissa, she mentioned that at that time, Daniel, the operator, he said, well, we can do this if we will spend $35,000, new pumps. He said that, but after that was jumping, no, we can do it this way, we can do it that way, engineering. So engineering, you call a group that is more expensive. And at this moment, we don't have a solution. We have now Dakota, he has opinions. He's a, he's a, an operator that he was with experience also with lift station. But now he proposed something. Well, we can propose, but this is the engineers, then they need to have the responsibility because we pay.
So just to, what I would suggest is if you have specific projects that you want to get reevaluated and you want them to be added to the motion, that we make sure that it's clear which projects we want the council, that you, that council is going to request or, or ask to be reevaluated. Because that's, I want to make sure that it's not just a blanket, we're doing all, reevaluating all the CIP. You mentioned three or four projects and I would just, if we're going to make that part of the, the, the request, we might be, be specific about the project.
Well, basic, the projects that we approve, we approve three or four projects. So we pay for engineering in that three or four projects. So if we approve that, we need to have from them what will be the variability of the estimation that they made because now they will come to the second phase construction now. In the way they move, because I was talking with the administrators, the council needs to let me know, Alphonse, not because you were talking. So we need to give it to her instructions so she can go with the engineers.
And right now the motion doesn't include that, so it's up to the motion maker to add that in the second.
That's it.
So the, the engineers have actually already been working on that. The CIP projects that are open coming, they have already been reevaluating their cost estimates on these because of the lift station costs. So they're already in the process of doing that.
Councilor Rosengard, then Councilor Johnson?
I just wanted to say, the agenda item on the, on the dais right now is either to deny all bids or the other choice we have is we have to award a bid. So we have these bids in front of us and we can't move forward unless we either decide to give someone the award of the bid or we deny all. So we need to stay on topic and deny all and then move, let the engineers who have already doing work on this, work on the next step. We're not losing anything from what the engineers have done so far. I've been on this project, every Public Works meeting I could possibly on, hearing about the lift station. So I'm well versed on what's going on with this. So I ask that we all, council, agree to deny all bids. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson?
In the spirit of that, I'm not going to ask my question.
Councilor Lischfield?
I'm going to add one thing, just, again, this is me being opportunistic. Uh, but if we could just ask, um, like at the beginning of the year, like the beginning of the first fiscal year, we sent out all the projects we wanted to do to get, uh, for the year to engineering. They all went out at the same time in a big batch and now we're kind of dealing with them. And I would just love to, I just ask that we start working more in a, um, like less of a batch process and more of like a sequential process. So maybe we only have one project in engineering at a time, um, just to kind of make a smoother workflow. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, so the motion passes to deny bids to, uh, for the Sterns Lift Station Rehabilitation Project. And the understanding is that, you know, from the engineering perspective, they already are working on an assessment. We may need to do some further assessment based on, uh, you know, second opinion to, to evaluate that. But I would like to see what the engineers come back with as a first step. All right, council, that moves us to agenda number 10. Consider an Act on Approval of an Ordinance Amending the Fiscal Year 2022 Budgets, Budget Amendment Number 12 for Various Departmental and Repair and Replacement Expenses. And council, you should have received the amended agenda number 10, um, today from staff with the recommendations from the Budget and Finance Committee. Um, we'll start with the staff overview of the budget amendments and then allow time for questions.
So good evening, mayor and council. Um, the item that was in your original packet went out on, um, Thursday at 6:00 and Budget and Finance met Thursday at 6:00. And as a result of the Budget and Finance meeting, there were some of the, um, items were amended, not in amount, but rather the pot from where they were going to come from. So the first action was, yes, allocate the revenue that came in as a result of the insurance claim. Allocate that to the public safety budget. Uh, and that would increase the, um, public safety budget by that same amount, $3,051.92. The second item is funding from general fund reserves, $14,100. Uh, that is the Public Works Asset Management Program that you've heard called Pub Works for $11,000. And then the computer equipment for the new community coordinator in the amount of $3,100. Both of those are unbudgeted items, so that needs money moved from reserve into the budget for 2122, $14,100. Next item is repair and replacement. The, um, switch in Public Works, as we move folks around and we, um, begin to plug into the walls, there are switches that are not active, ports that are not active. And so this is a, um, upgrade to what is there and this is 5,583. This is also an unbudgeted, unexpected item and that is repair and replacement funds for 5,583. for 5583. The part that changed is the public safety budget had a previously scheduled replacement for $278,000. You saw it in your budget presentation, you saw it in the budget book last year for 278, and that was going to account for new handheld radios, not the vehicle radios, handheld radios. They're requesting new tasers, there's $18,000 for a new ATV, and there's $112,000 for two new vehicles that are already at their service date. Budget and Finance recommendation is not to take that from repair and replacement, but rather to take it from the crime control reserve. The final change is Budget and Finance chose not to take action on a previously identified FY 2021 item. There was a budget that was approved for motorola radios, council took action on April 20th of '21. We did not receive the radios nor the invoice until May of 2022. And so you take the expense when it's realized. Unfortunately, the amount was not encumbered, so it fell to fund balance. It would have required council action to move it out of fund balance anyway. They chose not to take action on that just for the reason that it was not encumbered, and they felt like that was a accounting issue that needs to be raised and pass that on to council to make that decision. It would have been able to come out of crime control, however, actually, it was slated to come out of repair and replacement even at that point, but there was discussion about, can it come out of crime control? Can it come out of crime control? At their prior meeting, they allocated $90,000 for the FY 2223 expenses for PD, plus the $278,000 in the line item above, would only leave about $67,000 in the crime control fund, assuming everything comes according to plan. All the revenue projections for the end of the year meet target. So staff's recommendation is that 122 be taken out of originally planned repair and replacement. So, happy to take any questions.
Councilwoman Reitz?
So go back over to those radios again. So if we took it out of crime control, are you saying we'd only have $67,000 left in that ba, in that fund?
No, after the 200, after the 278,000 has been taken, there will only be $67,000 in the fund, estimated $67,000 in the fund.
At the end of the year?
Yes. So to draw down that 122 would put us in a negative position. 67 minus 122, 238.
So it'd be negative, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So they're not suggesting that we not buy the radios?
No, the radios have, they just came in, they've been received, we received the invoice, so.
Okay.
We owe the bill.
It's just a matter of which fund to take it out of?
Where, yes. It was originally scheduled from repair and replacement. It's still in fund balance in repair and replacement. It would have been ideal to take it from crime control, but if you recall, last year, we had an estimated deficit balance in crime control, and we thought the general fund was going to have to subsidize the crime control budget. Sales tax came in above, and we didn't have to make that 100, $110,000 transfer. So it's six one way, half dozen the other, whether it came from crime control, whether it came from reserves. We are working with projections.
So normally, though, our process is to utilize all of our funds in crime control each year?
No, crime control carries a balance in reserves.
Why?
That's a good question. Crime control carries a balance in reserve.
Ridiculous. It's, it's, it's money that is supposed to be spent for crime control, not sitting in a bank.
And crime control has carried traditionally over $400,000 in its reserves.
Ridiculous. You should take it down to zero.
Councilmember Rosen Garden, then Councilmember Lishfield?
Do keep in mind on the crime control, this is a fairly new fund. We used it in order to help fund the city facilities, and then we went through discussion in, in Budget and Finance, whether or not we, we wanted the chief to move personnel into crime control, because then they get used to having it, and it comes up to the people to vote on whether or not they want to renew it, and then they renewed it. So now renewing it, we should deplete that fund each time, leaving funds in the general fund that normally would be spent on the police.
We should absolutely deplete it. It is a tax that we put on our visitors, our residents that shop, and it is the tax for crime control, not to sit in a bank, so.
So this is, the, the presentation above is the, when you saw the draft presentation is where we thought the funds would end in '22, '23, and there's crime control at 4:45.
Councilwoman Lishfield?
Great, thank you. I'm tempted to ask Councilmember Rosen Garden to give her version of that, because like a Budget and Finance not making an action is usually a good conversation, but maybe I'll go listen to it. The thing that's kind of pressing is that, not pressing, but relevant here, given that Univista's made some hardware decisions in the past that were, they're prouder of some of their equipment than some of us might be. I've bought and installed a lot of switches, $5,000 is a lot. Have we looked at the possibility of just getting like desktop switches for a lot of these sites? Like, if there's a place where you need to plug in four things, but there's only one port, like a $12 desktop switch? Instead of re, like, going all the way back, you can just switch it there at a point of use?
So we, so basically, when the, the buildings were built, they were built with all of these ethernet ports, right? And then only, the, the switch that's over there only allowed for so many to be active, so we'd go try to plug something in, and it's like, oh, great, this port's not active. So are you suggesting that we have something in our offices that, is it like a splitter?
Yeah, 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 it's like $20 or something for like a nice desktop switch. It just sits here, and you plug one ethernet cord into the wall, and then you can plug four devices into it, that's $20. You can do eight port one for $25.
How would they share those? Because we have, for example, there's one ethernet port in my office, for example. And then there's a port next door and next door in each of the offices. How would we put a splitter in the office to do that?
I guess to my, my question is like, where's the shortage? Like, is there a place where you're like, there's only one port here, and I wish there were three? Or is it that, like, in any given room, there's only?
The ports are there, the ports, the ports are there. There's like so many ports.
I understand, yeah.
They're just not hot ports. And we, and every time, you know, when we, like, someone, we added somebody else, and we, you know, repurposed a, a room that was like a lounge room, and so that was Dakota's office. Well, when we, when they activated his port, then my port was deactivated. So it's just, it's, yeah, so the, the ports are there, it's just, the, the switch was too small for the number of ports that are in that building. It's like, we planned to have a lot of ports, but we didn't. We didn't.
Totally get it.
So the, what we're lacking?
We went the cheaper way, so.
What we're lacking is the power over ethernet, which is for our phone system.
Okay.
That's, you know, and like Matt said, my office came online, and then his office didn't work. So it was just power issues, not necessarily, you can't just split it, I guess.
I'll come, I'll try to make some time next week. I've, I've, I've done a lot of networking.
Councilmember Johnson, and then Mayor Breton?
I, I don't know if you guys have been in like a, like a private business office lately. Nobody has phones on their desk. Everyone just like uses their cellphone, and everything's on wifi. And, you know, we could get like, we could spend $1,000 on like the most kick butt Euro system ever, and just like have this entire campus with really fast wifi. So I, why do we still have phones?
So our phones, our phone systems do allow over internet. So, you know, I have a remote desktop. Once I log into my phone system, I could be anywhere. We still have a receptionist, she still has a phone, we still have people that call in, we still have folks at their desks with phones, because there's calls coming in from everywhere. They're not just coming in internally, it's external, people still have old telephone numbers. I don't know, you're, you're welcome to come.
Why do you have to park a call? I don't know.
Pretty much everybody answers phones, and we have to transfer them, and that's a little hard to do from a cellphone, especially when you don't have every single transfer number memorized.
It, does it seem like a little unequated? No?
Happy to have you guys come assess. Happy to have you guys come assess. Happy to have you guys come assess. We have third-party IT because we are not IT.
Mayor Breton?
Yep, and I, I was curious about the 122,000 for radios. And I was curious because it said that they, they request that in May 21. And do they request, they call and they say, this is the PO number, and this is, this is the radios that we want?
So Chief and Tyler had been in, had been working with this item. This was the amount that was quoted by the vendor, and so this is what we worked off of, this is what was in your council packet in April, actually, of '21. The issue is, again, our MIP system doesn't allow us to encumber, and so for us, it falls to fund balance, it falls back into the savings account when it's not used.
Yeah, well, it, it's because, what happened? When we tried to, when we tried to work with the budget, we asked how much that will cost, and they will tell you this amount. So you came with that number to the city council, and the city council, they approved. After we approved, the chief or somebody from the staff called the company and say, this is the PO number, we need these radios? That was? Okay, if that was, why would wait one year? If, if that was important, the radio of the police, why he wasn't pushing or looking for another place?
One, it's, it's just a supply issue. We're, we're not getting things when we get things. Everything has a long lead time to begin with. It, it took this long to get the radios delivered, and we can't pay something without an invoice. And we just got the invoice.
Yeah, and I am agree, because we have to pay, and they need that. But so, if the life now chain, when you will be working with your budget, you need to estimate, and perhaps that equipment will be one year later. So we need to start thinking in that way, because if some of that is so special, that equipment, we have to be in that way. Now, with the other, if I remember, at that time, you have the encumber in that area, $98,000.
$89,000.
Eighty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, eighty-nine. So sometimes at the end of the year, they say the sweeper, the sweeper gave it to us from the budget, if I remember, was $565,000. But not necessarily was that money free. So if last year, we say, with revenues and expenditures, we were so, so good, because we have $1.6 million. And after that, we say, allocate $500,000 in repairs and replacement. So we put $500,000. So at this moment, we are taking from that $500,000, right?
To some extent. So repair and replacement is never budgeted, so that wasn't part of the sweep. We don't move money out of repair and replacement until we're going to realize the purchase. That's when we move it out. So there was no extra sweep. What fell to fund balance in, in police is we had $89,000, and then there was a operational budget of 36, or whatever that difference is. All of that just fell to those fund balances. We didn't spend that money on something else, we didn't do any of that. It, it fell to the balances.
I would like to cut not too much. If at this moment, you order something, and you have the compromise, means that you allocate that money. Because if that was 122,000, you allocate that money. So in that way, the next year, this is allocated for that type of expenditure. So this is why when, when we say, we were waiting 12 months, but I don't want to go too much, we have the radios, we have to pay for that, but that, that, we need to be watching that.
Yes, repair and replacement should have a committed and non-committed section.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Rosen Garden?
I'm the reason we have an amended agenda. I wanted to make sure that I knew exactly what items were unbudgeted, what items were previously scheduled, just like we do with infrastructure. We would set money aside every year so that the police department could get new radios, so the police department can get new vehicles when they need them, et cetera. And so, and then Budget and Finance recommended using more of the money from the crime control. And then the last item as to why they did not approve the vehicle radios is because it was a 2021 budgeted item. They didn't feel, one person made the mention, they didn't feel comfortable of having it under the '22 budgeted line item, and the rest of the committee agreed with that, and basically punted it to council to make that decision. With that, I make a motion. I move that we approve an ordinance amending the FY 2022 budget amendment number 12 for various department and repair and replacement expenses as amended.
Is there a motion, is there a second? I'll second, all right.
May I question, are you, we, is your motion taking the money from crime control or repair and replacement for the radios?
Repair and replacement. Because if you take it from the crime control, you're depleting it down to 67,000.
So?
And if we don't have the revenue coming in that we need in order to finish this budget year, we're going to be in a negative. Then we have to take general fund money and move it over, transfer it over to crime control. So if we just leave the money there and take the money?
Yes, if you?
It, it would go negative, so yes, if we get the amount that's projected, and we've been very, we've gotten very good revenues this year in crime control, if that doesn't continue, it may deplete the $67,000 projected already. This is assuming that we continue getting very robust revenues. And if we do not, and if we take, deplete this down to zero here, then we will have to take it from general fund rather than being able to take it from repair and replacement.
So what you're saying, let me make sure I understand it, is that if we take it from the crime control budget, as originally thought to do, it would take the crime control budget down to $67,000? But we, you, there are some expenses that you think that will be, that need to be taken out for the rest of the year?
No.
Will, will the crime control budget be at zero at the end of the year, I guess?
It would be at negative. If you used it for that, there, currently with what's on the table here, with this going to repair and replacement, it would be $67,000 remaining. If we did it where we put this to repair, or to crime control instead, it would be $67,000 minus the 122,000.
So that 122 is not scheduled to come out of crime control. That 122 was scheduled to come out of repair and replacement.
Okay.
Not crime control. So with the depletion that they did at their first meeting with public safety, they depleted 90,000 for vehicles in this coming fiscal, for public safety, and then their recommendation that this 278 that was scheduled to come out of repair and replacement be moved to crime control.
Okay.
So that 278 plus the 90 is 358, and there's 435 or so in the fund, which is where we get the $67,000 remaining.
Okay.
So if we take that 122 out, we're going to be negative 55, 238 in the crime control. I'm, yes, in the crime control. To Rudy's point, you'd have to supplement it back with general fund anyway, but only 55,000.
Okay, my math doesn't work that way then, okay. I'm, I guess I am confused about this, it's not real clear to me, because 278, you have 445, you take out 278.
They took out 90 in the prior meeting.
90 and 278 is 380, and you, you expect to end the year at 445, so you still have the 67.
Seventy-seven, and?
You have 77. How does it get down to zero?
Because 122 hasn't been taken out of that.
So the 122? So the 122 is not included in the 278 number?
No, that's correct.
So I got 112, 36, 18, and 112. Yeah.
That is separate.
So those handheld ra, okay, this is different. These handheld radios are not the same radios down here.
Correct. That's why handheld is underlined and vehicle radios are underlined.
Would you be, the point is, how do we get, how do we get this down to zero?
We can wait until the next budget and schedule a full utilization of it as part of our next budget. Because right now, it's a guessing game whether we'll have $67,000 in there or we'll have $150,000 in there. Because we're probably going to get more revenue than what is projected. And so it's better, I think it's better to do it as part of our upcoming budget cycle to say, let's take it down to zero from the fund balance that we have at the end of the year and what we expect based on our estimates, and that's, you know, take it to zero every year.
Take it to zero, okay.
So my only concern about taking it to zero, and I will put this out there, is the crime control also funds staff. So there's, you know, a little bit of reserve that should be kept, whether it's three months or six months worth of reserve to fund the staff that's incorporated and the operational expenses that are incorporated in that crime control fund should sales tax take a dip.
Councilor Lischfield?
I'm also confused a little bit. The, and I think a lot of it has to do with the preparation of this document. I think there's like one thing we could fix here that would just like make everything much more clear to me. So, for example, where we say, have like crime control, 278,000. What, to my understanding, there's two buckets of money. One of them is the crime control budget, which is the money that we're collecting from sales tax, and one of them is the crime control reserve. Is that an accurate understanding?
That is correct.
So when this says crime control, which one of those two buckets does it mean?
Reserve. The crime control, normal sales tax collection is eaten up every dime, plus needing an additional $10,000 from the general fund supplement to cover the crime control operational budget.
Okay, and then so likewise with the like repair and replacement, like, I guess everywhere where it says like the type of fund, if it also said like which one, that'd be nice. It's like repair and replacement reserves or repair and replacement budget. That would be super helpful for me. So then I come over here, and I look at the current balance of the crime control reserves is 844,000.
Where, what page are you looking at?
On the last page here, or this horizontal one.
That is currently how much is in the fund, but we are expected to reduce that significantly this year with expenses. So the 445, 430 is what's projected to be in there by the beginning of next year. Okay.
Okay.
I'm not sure how to say it.
So how much will be in our reserve if we vote on this motion at the end of the year?
Approximately $67,000.
In the reserves?
Yes.
How much in the actual budget? Or the, for the year?
So there is no room in the budget?
Okay, there's no room there, okay.
No, there's no room in the budget.
So the 844...
That's just currently how much we have, but that's not what we project to have in there by the beginning of FY 23.
Okay.
So in the...
Wow, we're spending a lot of money.
Yes, there's, there's a lot of very expensive things. There are some vehicles that were, talk about high lead times. Some of the vehicles have six to nine months of lead time. Some of the equipment has very long lead time. So there are some expensive items.
So we are buying, not only are we buying, replacing two vehicles, but we're buying two more vehicles on top of that?
There's two scheduled.
Two more vehicles?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any other major things?
Not that we know of.
Just salaries, that's a big one.
We only have like three more, two more months in the, three more months into the sweep, I guess. That's a lot to go through, I guess.
A lot to go through. Eight hundred forty thousand dollars.
This is also part of the do-to-do-from that we talked about in the last meeting when we talked about this. So we're actually currently working through it. Kyle has gotten through a lot of it so far. It will be corrected by the beginning of the next fiscal year.
And I think the other thing that is worth noting is that that 67,000 is based on, is that based on our current revenue that we're getting? So it's updated based on what we've been receiving and projecting out for the rest of the month?
Yes, it's based on projection. So if we take a dip, that number's going to take a dip.
Maybe I need a report on the to-do, to-do, whatever.
Do-to-do-from.
Do-to, yes. Can we get, is there a list? Can you run a list?
It's all of the expenses that you see for the full year.
I understand what it is, but can you run a list so I can understand what it is? What's on that list?
Yeah, let's have a meeting, and we can discuss it.
You can't, you can't just run a list?
I don't think I understand what you're asking. That's why I was saying, maybe we can...
I want to know what's on the, due-to, to, I want to know what's on that list, I guess.
I can show you all of the recons. You can get one for every single month.
Essentially, when a police, when we do payroll, for example, it's coming out of general fund. If it's a crime control officer, the crime control owes money to the general fund. And it's those reconciliations that are due.
So all of the salaries that we have been paying out of, that we have allotted to crime control, we really have not been paying it out of crime control yet? Those will all come at the end of the year, since you only do it once a year?
It'll be coming now.
But now, you're going to do it monthly?
Yes, it'll be coming now. But every single expense you see, crime control doesn't write checks. Only the general fund or the utility fund writes checks.
Okay, I got you now. I understand what the problem is now.
Okay.
President, Mayor President.
Yep, at this moment, they attach, or the staff, they attach the budget adjustments. In my mind, when I am doing one budget, I have to have my revenues, and I need to adjust with my expenditures, and I need to balance that. So at the beginning of the year, if I say I will spend $5 million or $5.2 million, this is my, my balanced budget. At this moment, the budget adjustment is almost $1.9 million. If I remove the land, it's 789, 800,000. Eight hundred thousand dollars is a budget adjustment. So who is working properly? The staff, when they propose, they propose the budget of the city council, then continuously change and change. So this is something that we need to think. At this moment, with this budget, we made almost $800,000 budget adjustments. Not counting the land, 1.8 million dollars, 1.08. So, members of the council, I think that why we have a budget, if continuously, we are, we say, no, no, budget adjustment. Decisions and decisions. I think that we don't have a lot of people from the citizens that they will be watching us, how we are working with that fiscal and economical expenditures. And in the same way, when they gave it to me that lift stations, I feel that soon, little by little, the things, they will be more expensive, or we don't have that things. So we cannot be a good city council group if we spend $800,000 as a budget adjustment. Because if your budget was 5. something, we are at this moment over 20% of the budget, almost, then we start. It's a little less than 20%, but it's a lot of money. So we need to be careful, because it's so, so easy to say, well, we use the reserves, and we have the reserves. Well, the reserves, they belongs to the citizens. So no easy, we can say, yes, and yes. No, no, more vehicles, yeah, more vehicles. Do you have the inventory? No, I am working with the inventories, but you have more vehicles. I think that sometimes we need to be a little more, with more analysis of the things and meticulous, because it's citizens' money. They are not watching close, but we need to be careful. This paper has that, and it's not the staff. We, we request that, all of that kind of things. Be careful, members of the council.
Councilor Reed?
So, yes, I understand there's budget adjustments. What is the budget surplus at this point? That items that we budgeted for but are not spending?
It's going to be over 1.2 million in the CIP at least, plus additional unbudgeted revenues that are going to reach a million easily. So...
And then unbudgeted items are budgeted items that we have not used?
We are currently sitting at 2.3 million.
That we have not used?
That we have not used as of the beginning of June.
And out of that money, we may not be using all of that?
Correct.
How much, any guess?
I would say a majority of it is going to be CIP. And like we said, we encumber probably about 1.5 million, I think, for CIP.
So it's a little confusing when we say that we're spending like crazy. What we're, what we're not doing a good job is actually the budget line items.
That's right.
That's the issue, is the line items for the budget. Because things change.
That was going to be my comment, that...
Yeah, it's not the pot of dollars.
I'm sorry, but what happened? At this moment, we have a lot of encumber. This is why she say 2.3 million. Remember, then in the CIP, we have no 1.5, we have 1.9 million. So this is, I start with that talking. Then at this moment, we don't have that expenditures. Then they will come, when the construction will begin now. You say beautification, cameras, medical insurance, some of them, well, we have to spend that. The land that we purchased, well, was, was a good business. There, at this moment, we have other kind of things, then they no need to be there. And we allocate that money. We would agree for that. So we have to be careful. You understand, this is the paper that I am talking.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Where's beautification? Oh, CED beautification. That was money that was given to the city by the federal government.
No.
Yes, it was.
No. No, look, they gave it to us money. They gave it to us money because we have problems with the ice. And later, they gave it to us money when we have about the, tried to provide that money, 150, 160,000 for people, for the business.
It was an American rescue plan.
Rescue plan, but only we use 100,000. We didn't use the other 60.
That's what we're using it here for, it's beautification.
But, member of the council, they gave it to us the money for one purpose, and we didn't use for that purpose. Maybe the other 60,000, they don't qualify. Well, we have class A business, now we have class B. So, but we still with 60,000, not for our reserves or for something that we want. We will give it to them for the purpose. This is what I tried to say. But this is how I think. Everybody can think in different ways.
We respectfully disagree, because I think the beautification will enhance our shopping experience, and this was agreed upon by council, and this was a gift from the government.
No, I am the first person... I am the first person with beautification. But I brought the word beautification, because I believe in that. But when I say at this moment, two vehicles is the money of beautification. So are you agree that they need that vehicles? We need to have justifications. So this is what I tried to say. It's not only yes and yes. And if they say, we say with the attorney, 88,000. Well, because they made a mistake, and they didn't allocate that money from last, last year, and we pay this year. Okay, this is something that we need to have in another area. But that was a mistake. And that mistake, well, if we are, if we receive the service, no, I, the staff receive the service of the attorneys, they have a better idea how much money was from the attorneys.
So just let me interject here, because part of the reason we're doing these inline budget amendments, we're giving an opportunity for council to assess the need to approve the additional budget. Now is the time to ask, is there justification if you have concerns about, for example, expending money on two additional police vehicles? Now is the time to do that. That's why we're parsing this out this way. So if you, those previous amendments, we've already done the, you know, I understand that the cumulative amount is what's concerned in terms of like the adjustments, and we need to do a better job in terms of our budgeting for the year. But if you have a specific concern, raise them at the time that we're doing these adjustments. If you want to question the current adjustment, specifically the justification for two additional police vehicles, now's the time to do that. And before, so we don't get in the situation where two months from now, it's like, it's, you're, you know, we're again saying, why we have all these expenses? Well, we've approved each of these expenses. So I'm trying to make sure that it's clear that, as a council, we're taking action. We're deliberately taking action in each of these amendments. And if there's concerns about these amendments and you object to them, raise the objections, you know, and make sure the staff can give you the documentation we need for it. So that's, that's just, I want to make sure that we're, we're clear about that. I don't want this to be, if you have concerns about specific items in this adjustment, let's make sure staff can answer those before we move forward with it. And, you know, that's my, that's what I want to see.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see in these papers something about the vehicles that we need to replace. I think that they replace others, because I remember that was 278,000 or something that we have previously. Sylvia, we pay for some, it doesn't have here, but we paid for vehicles months ago.
We did, and that was a replacement of two different vehicles. He's essentially due two vehicles pretty much every year. And so what happens is, we replace a vehicle, he cycles them to administration, then they reach their useful life, and then they go to auction. That's, that's how it's been happening. It's taken about six to nine months to receive vehicles. So it feels like, didn't we just buy it? Didn't we just get here? But it was actually ordered several months ago. And I really would like to say, the budget adjustments, I hear you, I hear you. But if you look at this particular item, there's less than $20,000 of things that were unbudgeted and out of our control, so to speak. On the one hand, if we pad the line items too much, we're padding too much. We take them down through Budget and Finance and through various review. We take it down to where there's absolutely nothing left in those line items, absolutely nothing. And we're, we're in front of you begging and pleading for pennies, essentially. So the way we budget here, that you have to, it takes council action to move money from one fund to the next. It feels like that's a lot of money to be moved. But you saw this 278,000 in the budget document. You saw the 278,000 in the preparation of the PowerPoint with the budget overview. And now it's time to take that final action. So yes, the number appears very large, but it's not the first time we're seeing these numbers, nor, and Public Safety already reviewed the purchases as well and recommended that they, that they happen. So I'm between committees, I'm between a rock and a hard place, and now between council as well. So, you know, these are my hands up in the air.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
And then Councilor Lischfield?
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, then, Councilor Lischfield.
You asked me why, if that was the time to say yes or no to the cars. I don't have any historical, I don't have any reference. I trust in the chief, and I trust in her. I support that. So the only thing is, I hope that we will have the cars next May... and will be in the other budget. So that will be the same way. Well, I hope that we will have the cars in two months or three months, I hope. But I support that. That was your question.
Counselor Litchfield?
Two things. One, will you get that mic? Will you turn off your mic? Could we pull the switch from this? The $5,000 for the switch? Would that be okay, Councilmember Rosengarten? It was your motion, correct?
Correct. My concern is if we pull the switch and we're getting new computer for our new employee, we have a...
Okay, I'll just try to be in front of it, so we don't actually buy it.
We don't have to spend it. If we can find a solution, we approve the amendment, but if we can find a solution that is less expensive, we don't have to spend that amount.
Good. I'll, I'll just take that as a motivation for myself. Thank you. The second thing, I want to highlight something that happened in this conversation that I think is super important to, that it's very top of mind for me, is that when I see like this 800K of budget expenses, that's like mostly OpEx, like if you're thinking of a business. And if you say that we failed to deploy 1.2 million of CapEx, but we spent an extra 800K of OpEx, you didn't save money. You just failed to execute on a plan that's like building a better future and spent more money on operations. So that, like, I do not equate those things at all.
They are not apples and oranges, Councilmember.
I agree.
So I, so I very much like, sure, our revenues are going to come in a million dollars hot. Excellent. Like, maybe we should spend that. Definitely spend down like the crime control reserve. I'm totally on board. But I would just not, I would just want to draw a bright line there saying, Cap, like CIP, we failed to deploy? Like, that's a failure of us, that, you know, like somewhere like we missed on our plan. So like, let's try to get better at that plan, but it's not money saved.
Right, but there's a lot of budget line items that it is money we didn't need because it wasn't budgeted correctly, and not necessarily capital items. So I just want to make sure that people don't get the impression that we are spending more money than we have.
So I, I respectfully disagree with the OpEx equals CapEx failure. I respectfully disagree. Because prior to this CIP, your capital expenses were in your operating budget, and they weren't executed, but neither was maintenance either. So you do have an increase of operational expenses because maintenance and capital were not executed because the budget was trimmed as much as it was, and the prior staff just didn't want to come before the firing range anymore. There, there is no, there is no staff member who wants to be up here with this kind of rhetoric on a transfer that really, if you look at it, are needed. You see the condition of our buildings. This is why things don't happen. Really, truly, it is. It's not just a matter of resource. It is a matter of the ability of staff to withstand this over and over and over. So let it fall to fund balance. We didn't spend it. We're not in trouble. It's still there. The reserve is still great. The reserve is still, whatever. This is over, the reality is less than $20,000 of unfunded expenses. The shame on us is that the budget doesn't have $20,000 we can find. And the shame on us is that it is not so easy to transfer among line items within a department to handle an operational budget that is more efficient and in a long-term lean.
Totally agree. I think that we, like, if I save money by not changing the oil in my truck and blow the engine, it's not a money saved. I'm there with you 100%. Like, maybe it's just like the precedent of letting it fall to fund balance, like letting the repair and maintenance fall to fund balance. That's a problem, like, like if that's the path of least resistance, that should be the path of like most, you know, most, like, that should be the punitive path, right? Like, you failed to maintain the stuff. So yes, like, I get it, and I totally, I'm on board with all that. You know, let's do the investment, do all that. So, for sure. I don't want to make it sound like I'm, I'm against doing maintenance and repairs and stuff. I'm very much there.
Further discussion from council before opening it to members of the public? Go ahead, Melissa.
I have three points. I disagree with the characterization that the city administrator did. I agree with you. I don't think that it was that way, and I've been here a long time watching it. However, and I, and I think that we generally budget generously, because we, having been on budget and finance a long time, there, they look back and see how much is there, and they say, what's the average? And they make sure that there's enough there. And, and that's why we have the suite, because there was enough there. So I disagree about that. I want to highlight some things that people said that I think are really important. Councilmember Rosengarten made a point, I want to say it louder. It's like, when we have staff, I don't want to see us cutting the 18-month reserve. And, and, and I understand what Councilmember Reitz is saying and why she says it, but I disagree with it because of the staff component. Because the crime control tax is a lot of general fund, of what we used to have out of general fund, and it needs to, and, and that's the 18-month reserve. And so when we look at those reserves, we need to preserve that. Otherwise, we're draining. And we did that in different ways before, in Mayor Mills' time. And I don't want to see us do it again, because that changes our, our fund balance. It's a drain on the city, and that's a drain on the reserves. So we need to preserve that 18-month reserve that we did. And I think I've accurately said, I hope again, what you said louder. And so that's, that was an important point, I think, that Councilmember Rosengarten. I agree with you. And I think something that, between the two of you were saying, that I think is really important, is that we do need to keep looking because by not doing these capital improvement costs, they are escalating. So we are not doing our job when we don't accomplish them, and they're becoming more expensive. Which was why, as I said earlier, it was worth doing these building projects earlier, like, even though I, we, we all weren't exactly happy, but we get there together, you know? And so, so I think these are all important points. And, and when I hear them being run over, I just want to highlight them so we don't lose them. And then, so, so, and I do think that, I would be a little more short about the way I would say it, but I agree with Councilmember Carmona, or Member Tim Carmona, because it does matter how we budget. And we, and we, in order to look good, I think some items were cut. And that was a staff thing, that wasn't a committee thing, that wasn't a council thing. And so I was there when those discussions were made. So I, I just disagree, I just disagree with that. And we can all respectfully disagree. So, so that's what I want to say. But, but don't cut the 18-month reserve and realize that crime control is part of that 18-month reserve, in that reserve, because that's staff. And, and we can't do that, or we're, we're impoverishing ourselves. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak at this time? Counsel, so the motion that we have before us is to approve the budget amendments as the amended version that's presented to council? You had your hand raised, or is that ready to vote? Okay, you're ready, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving, approving the budget amendments, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, motion passes. Counsel, we're going to move on to Agenda Number 11, or, yes, Agenda Number 11. Back to my agenda real fast. Consider an act on approval amendment to the statement of work for the Canales and Co. contract. And I think we'll start with a presentation and overview from city staff. And then we also have Jose here to speak to any specific questions that council may have to this item.
Well, counsel, hopefully this one will be easier because there's no budget amendment associated with it. At the February 21 council meeting, you approved a contract with Canales and Company, and it was approved on consent. We were having a discussion on another budget amendment, so it kind of flew through. In that scope of work included some media. And so Canales and Co. is not charged with purchasing the media. We were going to need to go with a third-party media company to purchase the media. We did that. We priced that. There was two campaigns that were in that scope of work, and each of those campaigns is estimated at $50,000. Had a discussion with CED. Some of the information in the Canales and Co. contract is the brand book and some other pillars in design. He brought that to CED. CED said, we're ready to execute. We're ready to execute. Arts Commission said, we want to see stuff. We want to see stuff. Every committee has said, we want to hurry up and see stuff. We want to hurry up and see stuff. So part of the discussion has been tabling the essentially $100,000 expense of a media purchase for those two campaigns, revising the scope of work so that it does include deliverables that the committees are expecting that can be executed prior to the end of the fiscal. And that's things like the benches, the gateway markers, trail signs, an additional banner campaign, et cetera. And so you'll see the changes of what's been delivered and what is additional in the scope of work that's in your backup. So I'm happy to take any questions. Jose is here for any additional information that you may have.
Counsel, questions for staff or for Jose? Counselor Rosengarten?
Yes, I sent an Excel spreadsheet to Jose to review. And even though this item is not asking for additional money, I needed to understand the backup information, the dollars, in order to follow along. So the first one, if you go to, the first one with, with dollars in it, and it's from Canales and Company, where it starts with background, and then it goes to project fee. It talks about 80,062,000, 6,280. And if you add them together, then you take the 8619 and the 8235 and subtract them, your bottom number does not equal my bottom number.
I think that was a typo. It was a difference of $90.
90.
Yeah. That was just a typo. So you're, it, it, the balance should be 69,671.
Correct. And then, did you get a chance to review the others?
I did. Yes. So when we combined, to address, I think there was confusion or some, we're straightening out the invoicing to have a new cadence, since we're combining, we had these as two scopes of work. We had a Phase 1 for the brand strategy articulation and the campaign work. And then we had a second scope of work, which we were calling Phase 2, that was mainly allocated for beautification. And we were billing those on separate tracks as we made progress on, on those. When we decided to combine the scopes of work, we needed to combine all payments that had been made and all invoices that had been sent. So that's the, the confusing part where we, we, we were sending an amended statement of work to be signed, because the four remaining payments of 13,916, that's actually incorrect, because those were not considering the, the 6280 that had already been paid for beautification, where you, where you lined on your Excel sheet 24, line 24, 3140, those two payments for beautification. It wasn't considering those, because that was in a second scope of work. And so that was an oversight on our, on our band managers part. And so when we include that, that adjusts the 13,916 figure to 8754. Those would be the remaining, the remaining invoice schedule for the remaining payments throughout the rest of the year.
So you're saying the, and he's referring to my Excel spreadsheet. So you're saying on line 24, where we go to page 103 of 127, where it talks about invoicing, and it says $3,140, two payments at 6,280, that should be...
That should be included in our combined scope of work that we are now amending to like just one whole scope of work. Because we already, we, we already did that work, and we built for that work. And now we're including that work into the overall scope of work for the entire year. It just wasn't reflected, and when we sent over this, that wasn't taken into account here. And so we're just adjusting this, and, and we sent over, we're sending over a new one for Sylvia and staff.
Because Jose did admit that Sylvia was confused with the backup information also. So if, so I'm not alone in looking at the, these numbers and going,
I think, yeah...
Which numbers are we now looking at?
So we were, in the very beginning, in November, when I came before council and made a proposal to the city of what we could do, we were aware of the advertising budget of 114,500, I believe, was like the total advertising budget, which wasn't allocated. It was just what we had budgeted for advertising. We tried to shape a scope of work with that in, in mind and consideration. So we, we had a Phase 1 approach that was, again, it was pole banner campaigns, city branding, strategy definition. There's a bunch of items in that Phase 1 that were campaign-oriented that we had a budget, or it wasn't, it was just a not-to-exceed number of 84,500. Then, as part of a Phase 2, we had a beautification effort that we were defining. And that was going to be a not-to-exceed of 30K. When you add those two not-to-exceed budgets, they add up to the 114,500 so that we wouldn't be exceeding the advertising budget that was approved or allocated for advertising. So we, we were using that as a framework to work within to address the things that the city wanted done. Our first, our first phase of work, that was in November. We met with city staff and continued to develop out a proposal and a phase of work. When we got done with that, that first phase of work, that estimate came out to be 80,0525, I believe. Hold on one second. Where is that? Yeah, 80,245 was what the Phase 1 totaled. And, and the way we were looking at it was, it was, it was in, already within a not-to-exceed budget of 84,500. So we were under, under our not-to-exceed. For Phase 2, beautification, for our not-to-exceed 30K, we, that scope of work was really nebulous to us. Like, we didn't have strong deliverables that we were, that we felt like we were asked to accomplish. We felt like there was a lot of stuff to accomplish. There was more stuff to accomplish than we could accomplish for 30,000. So we wanted to approach it in two-month sprints. And basically, we broke those two-month sprints out into a time box in the amount of 6280 per two months. So we had 6280, and we roughly had eight months left in the year. So we were going to do two-month sprints, and roughly four of them, which would have been under our 30K, do not exceed the 30K. So we were trying to allocate beautification in that budget and allocate the campaign work in, in the Phase 1 budget. Where I think we got our wires crossed is what we were allocating for beautification efforts in that under 30K, I think we were assuming that that was available for media between Sylvia and I. And so that's where we got our wires crossed of what was going on. And so as we got, we started going into beautification. We did the first two-month sprints. We even started going into April and May. And when we sent an invoice for the second sprint, it was like, wait, what's this for? And so we were like, okay, we were going to approach beautification in sprints, like, and, and so that we weren't just having a big lump sum and not really sure what we're doing, we're just billing against this. We, we wanted to be more focused in what we were trying to accomplish. And then when we're done with those two months and we use that time, we move on to the next two months and say, okay, are we going to continue on with what we're doing? Or do we have new initiatives? So we could be more focused in how we approached it. Once we realized that, that we were not on the same page about what that budget was allocated for, we sat down and redefined, okay, what have we done so far? What is a priority to the city? Now that we know, actually, we did look into the media, like Sylvia said. And the media, they wanted $100,000 for two campaigns. And we just, we didn't think that was the best move. And so we decided, what is the most important thing for the city? And we rewrote the priorities and reallocated everything to work within the existing budget that was already approved. So the numbers here that you sent in your Excel sheet is, it comes from just combining these two, these two statements of work, and the numbers weren't right in how, in our invoice cadence and how we're billing them. So we withdrew the, the $13,000 invoice and are resubmitting it with the amended amount, keeping in mind that we're, now we're combining the two scopes of work. So the total amount that will be invoiced by Canales and Co. to the city will be that $86,000 figure that was approved in our contract originally. So the number's not changing, if that clears that up. Sorry for any confusion.
Yep.
And on, on page 1 or 8? And on, on page one oh eight of one twenty-seven, which is line item twenty-six on my Excel, you're stating that it's going to start on February first and November first, and that's ten months, but yet in your backup, you say eighty thousand, which is eleven months. Mine is seventy-two thousand, nine fifty, which is ten months.
So where we started with the seventy-two, ninety-five, we started on January first, or I'm sorry, January fourth is when we sent that first invoice, then February first, then March first, then April first, then May second. So five months of that. Once we got into May and we realized that we needed to combine the scopes of work, that we stopped billing that seventy-two, ninety-five. And now that amount is going to change to eighty-seven, fifty-four. And that will start, that starts in June, and then it continues in July, August first, September first, and September thirtieth, and the eighty-seven, fifty-four. And then when you add the thirty-one, forty, the two payments of that in February first and March first, that was for the initial sprint for beautification, and then we get to the eighty-six, five twenty-five.
Councilor Reed?
Yes, so the main purpose of this agenda item is a scope of work. It's a change in scope of work. It's not a change in dollars, it is the change in scope of work. We are essentially saying, what we're saying is, instead of doing a media campaign that, and developing a radio jingle and such like that for the city of Sunset Valley and doing Facebook ads, instead, we will put it into a more cohesive effort to beautify and brand our city. The difficult process with the media campaign is when you are advertising the city of Sunset Valley, if people don't know where Sunset Valley is, where the boundaries are, it is money that goes to advertisers and that's it. And so this is money, in my opinion, much better spent. It will be spent, and, you know, the end result should be, at the end, you walk, you drive into our city, you know that you are in a different city, that you are in Sunset Valley. You can see the difference, you can feel the difference. And so then, a media campaign could make sense because then you could say, come to Sunset Valley for this, and they'll say, oh, I know where that is. Now they don't. So now they know maybe shops on Brody, but not necessarily Sunset Valley. So that is all this is doing. So this is to channel his firm into helping the CED committee and the Arts Commission and the council and our residents to come up with a cohesive beautification, branding strategy and plan for this city. So that's all we're really voting for.
Yes.
Okay.
But I needed to know.
I understand.
Yeah, and I am fully in agreement with that approach. I want to set our boundaries before we start our advertising work.
The other, the other part to this is that would have drawn the hot fund down by a hundred thousand dollars.
I think the timing's right for that, wouldn't we? Mayor President?
Well, let me understand because it was a lot of numbers. So at this moment, we approve one hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred, and that is, that's all? No, because on the bottom, say, six thousand, two eighty, and eighty thousand, two forty-five.
No, the, the original contract amount is eighty-six, here, eighty-six, five twenty-five. That was the, that was the original contract amount. The miscommunication became this budget amount right here, a hundred and fourteen thousand, eight thirty-three. This is what he thought he had to work with. And so as we started talking beautification with committees, we already had a scope of work for media and banners, and he thought, oh, okay, this other work that the committees are asking me to do, I'm going to take from the one fourteen. My comment became, I only have authorization to approve what council has approved, but now council approved it, but the committees are not happy with it. So how do we, how do we make it all work without it costing more and without drawing the hot fund down a hundred thousand dollars?
So at this moment, we need to, to decide if, in addition of that eighty-six thousand?
No, there's no more money. The work is going to be captured in that eighty-six, but what's changing is, we're not going to have a commercial, we're not going to have the radio ad. Instead, we're going to have ideas for benches and the gateway markers, the beautification. Yes, sir.
So for that, how much money we will pay?
It's all within the same budget, we're just changing the scope of work.
Which budget?
This eighty-six, five twenty-five. The original budget.
Okay.
It's only the work, the deliverable is changing.
Okay. The vendor is agreeing, are you agreeing?
Yes. Yeah, I think it's, I think earlier on, I think we, in talking with the CED committee, like last year, I think there was interest in, in advertising, and so when we built the scope of work, we tried to build it in a way that accommodated what, what they were asking for, what they were asking about. And I think as we're getting into it, and we talked about the importance of identifying the boundaries of the city and like that people, when people come here, it's well-known that they're here, it's more efficiently spent.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
So counsel, any further questions? We don't have a motion yet, but Councilor Reed?
That's what I was going to do.
Okay.
I move to approve the change in scope of work for the Canales and Co. contract.
So motion, second?
Second, please.
Okay, second by Councilor Litchfield. We are missing one of our council members. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Counsel, that motion passes? Councilor Johnson? No, you're good? Okay, we're going to move on to our final agenda item, which is in agenda number twelve. Consider an act on approval of an ordinance amending the land development code, creating sections one fifty point one one eight dat through one fifty point one two nine for short-term rental registration, registration regulations under zoning land use. So counsel, coming from our last discussion at the last council meeting, we asked staff to put together a list of inspection items, which was provided as part of the backup for this material. Councilmember Litchfield also provided his, his edits as part of the input process, which I believe was distributed earlier today, which includes both edits to the regulation that he would like to see as well as edits to the inspection bullet points as well. So I'm hopeful, and in fact, we wanted to do this as part of a final discussion on this item, is that we come to consensus on some version of this that's either, you know, the as, as is, or where Councilmember Litchfield has made recommendations, or somewhere in between. And with that, I'll give, let staff give a overview, kind of update where we're at. Oh, the other thing that's part of the backup is the reference from other municipalities in terms of the fees that they provide and what is being proposed as part of our fees. You can see that's a range of fees depending on whether it's a short-term permit or it's a permit that lasts multiple years or has to get renewed. We have quite a range of different options for us to consider, and hand it over to Sylvia.
You did the summation just fine, the only, no, no, that's perfect. The only thing left for us to really consider is the proposed regulations and the, the inspection list, and I'll, I'll pull up Councilmember Litchfield's red line so I can go through some of the thought process of why those were even there to begin with. So verifying the number of bedrooms, that goes to the number of occupants in the house. Verifying the parking space and the parking plan, that goes specifically to impervious cover. We ask our residents right now, when they are remodeling or they're going to add, we need to make sure where things are going to park, where they're going to move, we have people in closing garages, et cetera, et cetera. So that was really that, and to make sure that they're off the street and we're not going to be receiving a lot of complaints from the surrounding neighborhoods. And then the information packet, that really was a safety issue. We plan to provide the who do you call, who should you call, where are your numbers, you know, what things should be working, you know, who, who's your contact, who's supposed to respond within the twenty-five minutes? That's that information packet, that when you stay in a hotel, you have your exit plan and you have your other prominent information, sort of the same, same concept. And then in the health and safety plan, really, the smoke detectors, obvious, but verifying that the exit doors and windows are operable and they're not blocked and folks can get out of them. The restrooms are in working order, that's sort of an environmental, public health, safety. Same thing with wiring and fire extinguishers, make sure we're not causing fires in the villas, especially where things are very close by, it would spread to a neighboring house very quickly. And then the exterior doors in a lock, that's, that is just a safety feature. Things should be able to lock, but they should also be able to open. And we felt those were pretty minimal requirements in terms of life, health, and safety for a, an STR. We're not going to go in and verify that all the electrical outlets work, for example, we're just making sure that things aren't exposed, as we see here in City Hall right now. Things aren't exposed and people don't, don't get hurt is really, truly what these are meant to entail.
And then, do you also want to go through the red lines that were proposed as well to the ordinance?
And then to the ordinance itself, council had asked us to define, actually, Planning Commission had asked us to define a bedroom, or maybe it was city council, I don't recall anymore. So we defined the bedroom. There is a section here, verification that the short-term rental is a registrant's property or permission from the property owner. I think the council had pretty much unanimous decision last time that that was okay, so long as the registrant, the lessee, had permission. And then we were asking for a dimensioned room layout. Is the room ten by twelve? Is the room eight by eight? Again, this is really first responders, when they come in, they should be able to know where things are and how large things are. And then again, the site plan, number of vehicles that can be legally parked without encroaching onto the street, the sidewalks, public rights of way, and also the impervious cover. As you know, our impervious cover, if you're driving on it, it's considered an impervious surface. Complete list of all rentals within the city, name, address of the local contact, trade name was actually an item put in by Planning Commission, by Zoning Commission, I'm sorry, because we went through the whole issue, there are several homes in the city that are owned by trusts and companies who can potentially be in, in the short-term rental. And then registered agents, that goes to if a company is opening, operating the STR. And then the zoning classification, I mean, that's kind of a no-brainer for us because these are all single-family residential for the most part. I guess you could have one in a, on two ninety in a neighborhood, no? Yep. And then the inspection required, that is just making sure that your minimum property standards, which is in the checklist, are met. And the safety brochure, again, I've, I've covered why staff felt the need for that. And then the, the notice within the property owners, that's, we send notice to property owners when there's a zoning change or a special use permit or those kinds of things. This is just in line with what we do for our current property owners. And then again, just from a safety, if you are applying to have the home be a short-term rental, that we should have the right to inspect, and that is really from a life, health, and safety perspective. And there is suspension or revocation, and it is a board of adjustments, appeal. And I think that might be it.
And then I think the other one that's in there, but not highlighted, is the extension from one year to two-year for the term of the permit?
I didn't see that.
If you scroll down. I'm sorry, go scroll up above this, the red line section here for inspections. Keep scrolling up, there it is.
Oh, two years, yes.
Yeah, so that was another proposal that he included as well. All right, so counsel, we have, you know, two proposals ahead before us that we can obviously work on and collaborate on, a third proposal or multiple iterations of this. We'll open it up for Councilmember Litchfield to give his context for the, you know, changes he's recommending, and then we'll open up for other discussion.
Perfect, thank you. So I just want to make it clear, to my mind, this is, the, the cause of this is we've had a couple of bad actors, so we've had a long history of this being totally fine. We currently have a couple of bad actors that are giving a couple people a hard time. To my mind, the most important thing that we need to do is be able to penalize those bad actors, like we need to give the city a toolbox to penalize those bad actors. And then we also want to ensure that there's compliance, like we want everybody to register so that if, you know, you want to do a short-term rental, we want to have everybody kind of agreeing to play by the rules, and if you step out of the rules, you know, you get slapped or whatever. So that, to that end, I want to just be very, very focused on making sure that we, again, so we give the tools and we make sure that everybody will comply. So in the software world, when you're designing websites and stuff, there's all these studies on compliance and like getting people to register, right? So they've had studies where you're registering for some website, and you put in your email address, you put in your password, and then if you ask somebody to put the password in again, just to confirm it, people will see like a seven percent drop-off rate in compliance and registration, just for putting in the same thing again. And so when I look at these, so that's kind of what I bring to mind when I look at this list of requirements to register, like I want everybody to register that wants to do an STR. I don't want anybody to fall off because they're like, oh, dimensioned room layout, that's scary, but I can provide a sketch of a room layout, that looks great. So I want to just like cut, 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 like make it as very simple as possible for the actual, the, the good actors in the city to comply with this. I think that most of these suggestions that I see in here are generally good and totally defensible. Like, if I was putting my life, health, safety, and property in Sylvia's hands, I would want her to do this. We are not in that position as a city, though. I don't want Sunset Valley to be certifying the life, health, and safety of like everybody that crosses the borders, like it's just not the place. There are, you know, certain things, but I don't want the city government to be treating these short-term rentals like they would a general manager. If I was a general manager of a property management company, I would want all these rules, but I don't think that's the role of the city government. I want to give the city government the tools to shut down a couple of these bad actors, definitely, but I want to make sure that the citizens being compliant is as simple as possible. Because as I've said, like in a couple of these, the only people that will not be deterred by any list of requirements you put in front of them are the commercial STR operators. They're going to be like, sure, this is a checklist, I have these in every city, this one's a little bit lighter than Austin, but great, now I'm in compliance. But for somebody that wants to just catch, so somebody that currently has that right now, in which we are looking to vote to take away their right, we are now like putting a bunch of onerous like regulations on them, or like requirements on getting that registration. I want that registration to be simple, maybe even de facto, or just by default. So that's kind of where that, that's, that was the aim that I had, and I'm happy to like discuss specific ones. I think the, the exit doors and windows in operable order, I think I, I think I deleted that one by mistake. So that one, that one can come back in, that seems fine, the, on the inspection checklist. But otherwise, kind of, that's, that's why I made those calls, or those requests there. Another thing that I would, just kind of throw out, some that I realized today when I was driving to this conference, an aspect of this that I'm a little bit uncomfortable with is also that we're putting all of the, kind of the judge, jury, executioner responsibilities in like one city employee. And I was wondering if, for like the revocation of this, right, if it might make more sense that, you know, if the complaints came? that, you know, if the complaints came to the city administrator, she compiled them, but then went to somebody else to actually revoke the right, you know, if that was to the mayor or that was to council or something. So you can appeal to the board of adjustments, but I would prefer that, like, I think it might make more sense if there was somebody else that actually did that initial revocation. To that end, yeah, like should there be a brochure and safety thing? Airbnb like really pushes that on the property owners to do that. It's a good thing to have. I don't think it's the city's job to enforce it. Should people, you know, have flushing toilets? Yes, it's not the city's job to enforce it. Airbnb is going to enforce that. The market will take care of a lot of this. I just really want to give the city the ability to shut down the couple of bad actors when they violate the stuff, but not make this too imposing on our residents. Thanks.
Member Lischfield, how will Airbnb shut it down if there's no working restroom?
You'll get, like, the person is in very fast contact, very easy contact with Airbnb. I've stayed at hundreds of Airbnbs. It's very well managed. You will get pulled, your listing will get pulled, you'll get reviewed, like bad reviews. It's not going to be a good time.
That's if you're using the Airbnb site.
Yes, that's the, the question that you asked was about Airbnb. VRBO, like they all have similar things, like they are taking response, they're kind of managing it alongside the actual property owner.
But that's just from a revenue perspective. The city's role in this is the life, health and safety. An overflowing sewage constitutes life, health and safety.
They turn around and walk out and Airbnb books them into a hotel two seconds later. I've had that, I've done that for rentals with, I had like two spiders in the corner. Like they are, like, the city's job is not to enforce this stuff at all.
So we, we verify for all of these things in a certificate of occupancy?
Cool. So it's already verified when we move in, so.
Yes, but each one of these is a move-in essentially.
I totally disagree.
And we're only inspecting it one time at the very beginning. And from a, from a sewage perspective, I would think that we would.
Who's asking to have backed-up plumbing and sewage overruns? Like, we have like two people throwing loud parties that are making their neighbors uncomfortable.
But if it's reported to VR, if it's reported to Airbnb or whatever third party is managing it, assuming they use a third party, they could have their own website. It, it really is incumbent upon us to understand if things aren't properly working, that they don't cause stress on other parts of the system.
The city should not be determining whether or not I put out enough clean towels or if I wipe the counter.
No, I'm not talking about towels.
Any of this sort of stuff. And we start encroaching on that as we start making these, sure, like, nobody should have overflowing sewage. Nobody wants to, nobody will, but I don't think that the city should take responsibility for making that certification to anybody.
Mayor Protam.
I think that we spend a lot of time in not only ourselves, was the zoning committee and also the board of adjustment and also ourselves. I don't know, and this is not personal, but we are, we are working with one ordinance. And I, I don't know how legal is then the people that is doing the ordinance has personal interest in that. Because it's no, it's no fair for everybody than they, they have other bill. So if one of the members of the council has this as a business or is doing this, I, I think then, I don't know how legal is then that person will need to participate in the creation of one ordinance. Is my question to the legal department.
Veronica Rivera, Assistant City Attorney. Mayor Protam, we have drafted based on input received from everyone and from, from P and Z. In terms of conflicts of interest, that is something that would need to be reported by council members, but again, we, we've looked at the revisions that were submitted by council member. The only item that we would look at to discuss with council is A2 in section 150.120 because of case law that's already out there with regard to, it's, it's all dealing with owners, property owners and not lessies. So when, when we're, the, the revision here asks for permission, we would just ask you to consider what would constitute permission, what type of documentation would constitute permission? Because bottom line is that the only one that, that would be responsible or that the city could go and enforce against someone is the property owner and not the lessee. So that's the only item. The rest is up to the city council with regard to revisions that have been requested from another council member. We don't take issue with anything else. We did review the revisions that were submitted today.
Yeah, that, that is, that is the legal department opinion about this document.
Yes, sir.
My question is, how legal is then somebody has interest in this business and also has the opportunity to vote, vote in, in, in the approval or disapproval of that?
Understood, sir. And that's why I'm saying if there is a conflict of interest, the council member needs to disclose.
So it's no conflict of interest?
Not unless we know that they are in, in the business and that we've been provided documentation.
Councilmember Lischfield, would you like to disclose?
Yeah, to be clear, I have used Airbnb tons, like we've managed properties, other places. We've toyed with the idea of listing the house in Sunset Valley, but we've never done it. We've thought about it, but we've never had a short-term rental here. But it is part of the value of the property that I bought, so I don't see a reason, yeah. So I don't feel like I'm conflicted here. I feel like I'm, I, I have a very personal stake in every single thing we vote on here. We're a tiny city, but.
This is why I say, don't take that personal. My point is, I am a citizen, then I will be living here, not as a business. I will be only living, yeah, because I can take that as a business and I, I will move to another place and later move to another place. So, so somebody needs to be responsible. So my view is different than your view. This is then I tried to say, but we didn't finish. At this moment, only we analyze and we will discuss. That's it.
The base case here.
Councilmember Lischfield and then Councilmember Johnson.
Is that, like, I have no intention of moving away from Sunset Valley and using my house as a short-term rental and we've never done that. Sometimes I've traveled and we had somebody stay in our place for a week at a time or something. And I think that's the majority of what we want to protect. Like I'm not trying to make this a more attractive business for people to come by properties in Sunset Valley and man, operate them as solely as short-term rentals. What I'm trying to protect is the ability for someone to be like, hey, that'd be fun, like maybe someone will rent our house for a weekend and I can go do, you know, I can go to Spain. Like, that's the sort of thing that I don't want to impose. And I think that most of these regulations are aimed at the full-time commercial operator and I don't think that's who we should be aiming our regulations at. Like I don't think we should punish the small guy because maybe some company is going to come in and do that. I want to protect the small guy, the person that might want to try it once.
Councilmember Johnson.
The, the point that you're making kind of goes both ways as well, though, because like you live next to, and so it's just like, it affects like your resale value. So I, I never even thought about conflict of interest on this. I just assumed it was you looking at residents from their perspective and also from like living next to them. I, I thought it was all like very much like, we were just thinking about our, our residents, like Sharon. And also when I was thinking about it, I was thinking about you having to live next to one and it's just like, you know, how you weigh these, weigh these things. So, but yeah, it's just one of these things where it's like, all of this stuff that we talked about affects us in, in some way. My actual point was when, how do you see, I really saw Sylvia's point in, you know, like the city's perspective on these things that we want to strike out. If, I appreciate your kind of like market-driven, like course correction where, you know, if, if it's disgusting, then they'll just like get one star to death and whatever, they'll just like correct it on their own. But if it was so bad that it was backing up sewage into the, you know, we could bring this back and talk about it, but like, how bad does it, what, what, what do you see as the feedback loop? So that when things get, just as a straw man, like how bad would these things have to get for us to reevaluate, like, oh, maybe number three was a good point or whatever? So I just want to hear your perspective on that.
Yeah, I would want to be, so that's where I'm just trying to be very conservative in doing this, but absolutely, if one of these, and again, like there are cities, you know, there's like coastal cities where Airbnbs are, you know, large parts of the revenue and they have certain sets of problems. If it turns out that we start to develop problems like that, yeah, like let's definitely revisit those. I'm totally happy to revisit them, but to me, it seems like just preemptive, like there's, we saw a little problem, you know, we're killing a fly with dynamite and I would just rather take a much more targeted approach on it.
Oh, go ahead.
You know, I was also going to say, like, we, we currently, they're out there currently under basically no regulations, right? So I'm kind of leaning towards maybe we, we start light and move progressively as things kind of like pop up. I mean, like, they're, they're there. Like the only thing we're doing is imposing tighter regulations on them from potentially this night forward. And so I, I know that maybe some of us wish it was a bigger step towards making peace in the neighborhoods, but.
Let me, let me also just jump in because I think, I'm, I'm not hearing any kind of fundamental disagreement that we need some regulation, right? It's just a matter of what the mechanism is in terms of the, the process for, you know, getting registered, the inspections and the fees. I don't think there's a difference between the positions of needing regulation, right? The fact that we want to be able to stop bad actors and, and, and it becomes questions, well, how much, you know, regulation do we need to have in order to affect that? I would say that one other suggestion I have, because it may, there's, there's kind of this idea of keep it as light as possible because we want to have people onboarded. Another way we could approach that is make it valid for a longer period of time so that even if we have more heavyweight kind of upfront process, it's valid for a longer period of time so you're not having to redo that, you know, with the frequency that we have. So that's kind of why I like, one of the ideas is maybe it's not just one year, maybe it's multiple years. I saw the city of San Antonio, for example, it's valid for three years, you know, so maybe there's a balance to say, maybe there's a little bit more upfront work that has to be done, but it's valid for a longer period of time and that's a compromise, right? You know, so that it's, maybe there is a little bit more inspection and you're kind of like a certificate of occupancy because three years is about what you might expect like a, you know, house to sort of like transition on the market in some cases, right? So I, I, that's another approach that just as an offer of, you know, maybe there's a balance that we can work out to say, you know, perhaps we do more kind of upfront, but it's in place longer and we look at a fee structure that maybe, you know, again, city of San Antonio is $110. I'm not sure, you know, whether that's comparable to, you know, what we're talking, you know, what we want to need to do for inspections. But I don't think there's, I just want to reinforce, there's not a fundamental difference in terms of these positions in terms of having the regulation. It's just a matter of what the regulation requires as part of the, you know, the, the process and the fees and how long it lasts. That's, that being said, I'll open it back up for, you know, rest of the council to weigh in. Councilmember Johnson, go ahead.
So, so one of the ones that was, or I guess there was two of them that were important to me and I'm glad we brought the other one back, which was around like fire safety. Like we, you know, we want people to, we want to have STRs or like we want to be able to regulate them and 12 people dying in a flop house fire is not a good look. Some of the other thing, you know, coming, coming back to, you know, the, the two different perspectives, the stronger kind of perspectives that we have on the dais here is, I, I think it's super valuable to have Alfonso, unfortunately, like live next to one because it's like, you know what the most painful points are, you know? We, like Sharon comes like every time, but like, I, I think I know why you're here. I, I assume maybe.
I'm just trying to push you here.
Right, okay, so, but we don't have, like, where is the Alfonso of the residents who is just like, I, I'm affected so much by this that please let, hear my, you know, hear my points. So you are the proxy here for, for all that. And so I do want to, like, these things that are being striked out and struck out instead of, I don't know, instead of us just like debating these like whatever, just be like, this is annoying, this is what makes my life difficult. It, it can't be that there's a rental next to you because that, it's not going to change really, unfortunately, but if you could say like, this is annoying, like, I would, I would wait that very heavily because again, there's nobody else here to tell us what sucks about living next to one of these things.
Mayor Protam.
I think that you go first.
Oh, sorry. Councilmember Rosengard and then Mayor Protam.
No, he would not first. I was one of them.
All right.
You, you were first, if you want.
Oh.
Okay.
Mayor Protam and then Councilmember Rosengard.
I, I think then, again, I have one close to my house and I can see the cars and I saw your place, Sharon, and it's totally different. So we're not talking the same, so we cannot compare in the same. But for example, for me, if I have a house, the house means something, love. For me, it's the same as a car. The car, I have some relation. I cannot borrow my car to anybody. Sometimes my wife, she say, can I go to some place? Be careful because this and this, because I love my car. With my house, well, it's in the same way. I have a love for that house. When I purchased that house, I have a lot of idols and ideas and I wanted. That doesn't mean that I am familiar with renting. I am familiar with that. And was very easy because we used to live there. So we used to rent other things, but we used to live there. And my father, when something was, he used to go there and say, order. If you continue in that place, in that way, you need to abandon this place. But we used to live in that place. Now it's a little difficult. And I have a dog and he loves to be on the back watching. And some of the members in this, in this table, they are familiar with my dog and he's barking, barking if somebody show up. Now, because I have visitors from that house, they are smoking so nice and, and it's not bad, they enjoy, they pay, but my dog, he's crazy, so I need to go outside and bring back my dog inside. And sometimes if I want to see the, the dark, I don't smoke. And most of the people that they rent, they smoke a lot. And for me, they say, why I am living here? So I cannot stop that. We will start with these rules and we start with one city, with other city, and we try to have some abstract and some people, they were working so hard, really, really hard to develop that. So looking in that way, we have one paper and that paper would try to say, this is the ordinance. But we have another paper that say, no, you are so strong, you are, you are so pushy, no, you don't need to do that, I, I don't like that. Well, I don't like. Well, I don't like a lot of things, and when I tried to do construction in this town, they have appendix A, appendix B, and they don't say, this is, the appendix A, light, and the appendix A, B, is strong. This is an ordinance, and this is something that we need to comply. It doesn't have light or different grades, this is one standard. So I believe that if you have some points about the years, I agree with you, but we cannot change a lot of things. When we say about the doors of the house, you don't expect to see in one place, two beds, and later they have sofa, and this is one room. So how many people they expect to have in that room? And in that room, they don't have a bathroom, because they were using that, I saw the pictures. So you say the good or the bad, well, Sharon always, she came here, and she participated, and she has a business, and she's there, it's totally different. So this is then we need to evaluate. If we need to do some simple modifications, I am agreeing, but all that you scratch, I disagree. That is my position. Thank you.
Councilor Rosengard, and then Councilor Reed.
I'd like to hear from Sharon on some of these points, if you have a moment. You probably haven't had a chance to see any of this, this is just given to us. So one of them is site or survey plan. Would you have an issue with providing a site or survey plan?
No.
Okay. A complete list of all rentals in the city, any issue with that?
Oh, just me saying I'm a rental?
Yes.
No, I think that's good.
One of the others is safety, because I know there's a lot here, so if I go over all of it, it's quite a bit. Safety features. It says each short-term rental registered shall provide in the premises, working smoke detectors in accordance with adopted codes, and at least one working carbon monoxide detector, and alarm, and one working fire extinguisher. The premises shall otherwise comply with applicable codes of ordinance, including but not limited to building and fire codes. Okay? So right now, without this ordinance, do you have to have a fire extinguisher in your property, and a carbon monoxide detector, and an alarm?
I have all of those, but I'm not sure what, why, or who told me I must have those. I just did a lot of research and figured, in terms of liability, I think it was my insurance company, actually, that said, here's what you need. I need a life preserver, even though my pool's only four feet deep, I need lots of different things, and I just make sure, because a lot of my insurance, and I have vacation rental insurance, so a lot of that guidance comes from them.
Okay. So that's why I'm asking this, because isn't there something else that already tells you what needs to be done before we get to this, registration for short-term rentals?
I think that there's lots of guidelines that both the RBO and Airbnb, and those are the two that I use. They actually, they send out a lot of emails in terms of, like, and here's an educational bit, and there are also conferences that you would go to, so, but mostly, I would say that my insurance company is the one that gives me a lot of the safety and legal guidelines.
Okay. Because I know that with a fire extinguisher, if you have a fire extinguisher in your rental property, and you don't, on a yearly basis, have it inspected, and there's a fire, and your tenant uses that fire extinguisher and it doesn't work.
Yes.
You're liable.
Yes.
And so now, if the city is inspecting the fire extinguisher, they have to make sure it works, not just that they physically see it, and if something happens, could the tenant say the city's liable?
Yeah, that is one of the concerns that the city should have, and that not only liabilities should something go wrong when the city approved it, but also, there might be a lot of, say there may be someone that has another rental that might actually bring a legal suit against some of the points that you're discussing, and say, well, according to this law, I mean, does the city want to, how much does the city want to defend against someone that might have a problem with something that's on the line?
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm curious about, is what kind of liability are we going to have?
I wanted to say that in very early, again, zoning has been working on this, I guess a year now, in an early iteration of regulations they were looking at included, when this was going to be a permit, not a registration, right, when this was going to be an STR permit, the, one of the criteria was to require that the STR have vacation rental insurance, right? But that was struck out early on by advice from legal based on case law that had gone through in Texas. So again, this is not a permit that we're issuing, it's a registration. So we can't, we're not requiring, we're not forcing the STR operator to have insurance, although.
It's smart.
We hope, yeah, we hope that they would.
Yeah. Okay. Let's see, I'm going to leave it at this, what about the parking area? So if we cross out that you have to list where your tenants are going to park, and that they will not encumber on your neighbors, but we cross that out and say, no, you don't have to list where your tenants are going to park?
Each, well, I communicate with my guests before they show up, and I ask them how many cars they have, I tell them that, I discourage them, actually, from parking on the street, so I tell them to carpool, because I just don't want the visual of just cars always in my front, along my front path, even though legally you can park there, I kind of infer that it's best not to. Also, my neighbors down the street have said, one of them, has said that when she comes up the hill, and there's someone parked on the side of the road, she has to just go a little bit further into the road, but then, even though it doesn't seem like a really big hill, when another, if another car is coming fast over the hill, they're in the middle. So I just would rather, I ask them not to park on the street and to make alternative arrangements in terms of getting to my house.
All right, council.
That's all I have.
Before we proceed further with discussion, we do have a nine o'clock time that we need to extend to continue our session.
I motion we extend one hour.
Up to, yeah. Sarah second for that.
That's it.
Second. All those in favor of extending our meeting for up to one hour, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, now we can proceed.
I want to say, when people park on the street, and people have to go slower on Reese, I actually kind of like it. So it's like, let them park in the street.
Councilor Reed.
Yes. So I kind of see two ways of going about this. We've got a couple of thought processes. I like your idea of lengthening the time period. You do a more robust registration, and then you lengthen the time period where you have to re-register. A lot of people have put an enormous amount of time into this. There's been a lot of, zoning has done, looked at this, legal has looked at this, has Board of Adjustment looked at this? Not, okay. So there's been lots of effort that has already been put into this. I agree with some of the things you're mentioning, particularly this re-inspection part, it sounds very legal-ish, but maybe you need that for ability as part of your tool chest, I'm not sure. It sounds like legal kind of put that in there. So we can either, I am not comfortable with just wholesaling all the crossouts. I am okay having a more robust and linking the years. If we can't come to an agreement, then I would suggest we use a work session where we go line by line, because this will be kind of tedious to do. And I don't have a problem with doing that, to make sure we get it right, but I also want to point out that I am not unhappy with what the work that has already been done, and the effort. And I think the compromise is if we make the registration period a little bit longer, then that may seem a little more palatable. But I'm in agreement with a lot of what you, where you're coming from, but there are property rights on everybody's side. There are property rights for people who don't, who live next door to a short-term rental, and the people who own the property. And so I respect all those property rights, and I want to have workable solutions for all of them. I'm kind of a stickler for the parking, you weren't on the council, but we have spent hours talking about people parking in front of people's houses, so I do like parking plans. So I'm kind of more aligned to moving in the direction where we lengthen the registration timeframe, as you suggested, Mark, and leave as is, unless there is something that's just blaring or glaring. That's kind of where I'm leaning. If that's not palatable, then I suggest we take this up in one of our work sessions, and we just do it together, line by line, so.
Okay. And so, Councilor Lishfield, what I would ask is that if we did take that approach, what are the sort of like the things that you, regardless of length, you wouldn't want in any kind of regulation, and whether that's like?
So again, well, two things, let me answer that in a moment. So Councilor, Mayor Protem, I feel like I totally understand where you are, that feels like awful about those people making your dog go crazy and smoking, I totally get it. Nothing in this proposed registration process will change any of that, nothing about the registration will. Maybe something in the actual enforcement and rules may be able to be used, and those, I'm like, yes, let's have them. But like, the people that are renting out the place next to you, they're going to go through this checklist no matter what it is. We can ask them to submit DNA samples, we can ask them to do anything, they will do it. What I'm trying to do is say, like, let's have all the same enforcement, the same regulations, absolutely, but just make it like super dead simple to get registered and into the system. That's what all these are. I don't want people to be parking all over the place, we've already got rules about that. I don't want people playing loud music, smoking in your face, like, we already have rules about that. I just want it to be easy to get into compliance, and then give them some enforcement tools, and that's what this provides to me.
Mayor, and did you, I don't know if there was a second part of that?
And then to that, I'm, again, there's no, there's no one thing here that's egregious to me, it's just that, like, the sum of them is just too much.
Mayor Protem, and then Councilor Johnson.
Okay. I think then we came to one point, then we agree. We don't need to wait for one hour than we will spend in a working session. We have at this moment one hour. If we go point by point, almost we will clean this. So instead of propose, then we will spend one hour discussing another day, so at this moment, we have one hour. Why we don't spend the time, and we will clean this? So if I say that is, the opinion of some people is in one way or another, so we will discuss. Now, it's very difficult, because in some of these points, we can spend more than one hour for disagreement, so unless, then we need to study this very, very good, because they gave it to me when I sit in this table. So I sat, I sat, passed. So, Mr. Mayor, we can discuss this, or as member Reed, she said, that in a workshop, the only problem is, or the good point will be, then we can spend more time reading each of these, and in that way, we don't need to waste perhaps too much time. But if no, I think that we cannot approve this, because some people disagree with this and disagree with that, well, why we don't read this, and everybody would say, this is my point, and I don't move, unless we will see what happened. But if we are talking and talking, we will have 10 o'clock, and we will come to, we didn't finish this. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson.
To Justin's point about nothing will change, I think there are some things in here that, I think the people are smoking, not just because they're like one person, you know, out of like three people playing, that is like a smoker in the backyard. I think it's like, they come to Austin, have a good time, and so that's just like.
They have a lovely, pretty.
Yeah, and is it because there's like, and is it because, I don't know, they're on vacation, and there's like a discreet number of them, or because it's like, you know, no party houses, but it's just like, when do you cross the line into being a party house? It's like when you start partying, I guess. So it's just like, if we just say, I have the Loft House, Austin, why isn't it Loft House, Sunset Valley, first of all, but Loft House, website up, sleeps 13. It fits 13, and we never have an issue with people spilling out, but I'm sure the house next to Alfonso, like, would be, you know, would be pretty packed if you had 13 people in it. So if we, I think one, at least one of them that I saw crossed off was like, around like a parking plan, and it's just like, that could prevent people from being like, hey, we got this place, it's over down in southwest Austin, everyone come over, we're going to rage all night, we don't care. You know, it just, it narrows the focus of like the people who would rent it. Like, when you go somewhere, well, I know when our family goes somewhere, it's like, we want to be in Minneapolis, we're just going to stay there, like, we're not going there to party, but I'm also 42, so like, but I've definitely rented a house to just, you know, have a fun time in the city. So like, I think there's a few of these things that can just, we can shape the people who are renting it. Go ahead.
So to be clear, so section 150, 122 restrictions, section C is the limit on the number of vehicles, which is the maximum of one per bedroom. We've got the rule. We can tell people what the rule is.
Where's the rule?
This is what we're doing. So like, we're saying, and I'm saying like, yeah, let's have that as a rule. All I'm asking for is we remove that field from the application form, because that's going to just be one more, that's a password confirmation, it's just that there's one more little step. But we have the rule about parking, how many cars can be there, and I'm saying, great, let's keep that rule, just don't make people submit it as part of the application. So it's in the actual regulations, which is.
Okay, if that's the case, I'm.
150, 122.
Remember, you don't want to give them the brochure that says what they can and can't do either, so.
Correct. I don't want the city to be enforcing, so not, like, the code officer comes over and is like, I found that you did not provide people a brochure, here's a fine for $2,000. That's just like a completely asinine place to be, to me. Like, people should do stuff like that.
That's not.
But like, then why would we want to make that a law?
Well, the issue really is truly to give you a code that has tools, that has tools. If you, if the code is so watered down, that even if there is a violation, and we can't enforce it, or we can't abate the issue or the nuisance in some other fashion, I don't understand why you would tie the hands of the city to allow those things that may become nuisances to other residents who have to live next to them.
Wait, so, no, so that's saying like, because, like, if we're like, we can't stop people from smoking, but we found they used the wrong font in the brochure, we got them? Like, that sounded dangerously close to that, and that makes me really uncomfortable.
Also, you know, when codes are written vague, it poses a problem both for the city when we're trying to enforce things, and for the applicant. If something's so vague, they're like, well, we're trying to register, we don't really, you know, and they just turn something in. And it's not like, you know, we're a small city, we are a staff that likes to help people. It's not like we're going to say, well, we deny your registration because you didn't include all this. We're going to, yeah, we're going to help people, you know, we're going, I assist people with, we assist people with applications all the time, so, you know, when they call in for a permit, or they need to, you know, to register an event, like, we're going to help the resident as best as we can to get, you know, to submit this. We're going to transfer this legalese and make it into a, you know, a form that's like a bulleted checklist, okay, make sure you include this, include that. So we will, we will help the resident, because I understand your point, you don't want to deter residents from doing the right thing by making the registration process process too onerous. Well, that is why staff is here. We will, we will do our best to assist the, the residents through the process.
Sharon, do you want to go ahead and speak?
When I've traveled and stayed in other Airbnbs, often I have a disappointing experience and I think to myself, oh my God, someone should come in and tell these people how to do it right because they're hurting everyone else who's doing it right. And so I, I'm really behind getting, making the application as easy as possible and as maybe not as scary as possible because I have a feeling, and, and not that I'm opposed to anything that the inspection will reveal in terms of safety, but I'm afraid that there might be a lot of people who won't apply because they are not totally sure that when someone comes into their home, they won't, they won't say, hey, you've got this. And maybe, I think that people might not want someone potentially calling them out for something that's not part of the application, but that might actually come around later and hurt them. So I just want to make sure that everybody is, is feeling confident that, that their privacy is preserved if someone comes into their home.
So Council, I know that this is a lot of thought in this process that went into getting us to the point where we're at, and there's still, I think, a lot of discussion that we have yet to have. I don't know if we can solve it all in this session like I was hoping. You know, I don't want to spin our wheels if we're going to need some additional time to actually walk through this kind of point by point. I think there may be some ability for us to, to get there if we, we make some progress in the next, you know, little bit. But I'm not sure that we can finalize anything, you know, tonight as far as it is endless, because there is a kind of a wide gulf in, in some of the disagreements. That being said, you know, if, if Council wants to express items that they are in concurrence with, that they generally agree with, this after all doesn't have to necessarily, we are a voting body, right? So in the end, it's the majority of what Council wants, right? So it doesn't have to necessarily be full consensus. It can be, you know, Council expressing that I would like to see this item retained or this item removed. We can do that now or we can do that in a work session. Or if, you know, Council is feeling confident about, you know, the, the strength of what they're, they're, what they want to take and want to put a motion forward, that's another approach as well. So just leaving that, you know, if we, if everybody's in consensus that we want to work on this more, I'm okay with bringing this back as a working session. However, we've also just acknowledging that we've had a lot of attempts at, you know, getting this to where it's had. This has come, this is the third time, I think, it's come before our council, it's been through several committees. We're in agreement that we want to have a way to enforce this. And, and, and so I don't want to stray too far from that, that there's a, a need and we are in agreement that there needs to be a way to, to manage this, so. Councilor Rosengard.
I'm just going to ask two questions. Would everybody on Council possibly vote for the recommendations of Councilmember Litchfield and then we work on it and add back in? Or is that double the work? Or do we approve what's been presented to us in the original backup and then pull away? Anybody want to take, tackle that?
Councilor Reitz.
So my problem with accepting Councilmember Litchfield's proposal, even though I think he's got some good ideas, I just haven't read it thoroughly enough. I got it at, I saw it at 4:15 or something like that and I didn't have time to read it. And then it's difficult to read and really to go through it while I'm trying to listen to everybody else. And so I have difficulty saying yes without reading the fine print. I'm married to an attorney, y'all got to remember.
So are you saying that you want to make a motion to table this?
I tried that earlier.
And I think that's valid. I think it's, if, I'm, if you want some more time, that obviously, I, again, you know, my emphasis is that, well, we, we've seen this a lot. But at the same time, I don't want this to be something where a month from now or two months from now, a year from now, we're revising it again. You know, and like, it was just, I want to get it right, you know, and I want to get it right as, as possible. I don't think if we wait another session, you know, for example, if we make up this our focus for our working session and then we potentially take immediate action as an agenda item in the next meeting, that's impossible.
So, so Veronica, I have a question. So if Council were to, so we have a work session, right, with no, it's like a work session only, no action from five to six. If we work session this topic, you know, going, going through line by line, can we post it for action then at the six o'clock meeting, right?
Yes.
But work session with action at, at the meeting.
Yes, you can place the item on the agenda.
And there isn't currently.
There being an item on the agenda with as is, and then the work session would be an agreement among the Council about what changes we would make and then the motion would incorporate those changes.
Right. And we.
You're not going to table it.
Right. And, and we currently don't have a work session topics like.
Scheduled for the next session.
Scheduled for the 21st. Well, oh, we do.
You have the land development code next session and then this coming week sometime we have to find time for.
So I think the, the question is, if we wanted to, do we, can we move out the land development code to fit this in or do we, you know, do this after that?
We can move land development code out and then move this one in.
Okay. So Council, I'm, what I'm hearing is that it'd be useful to have a little bit more time with this, at least from one Councilmember's point of view and possibly, you know, others. And that if we go bring this back as our next agenda item is a work session and then immediately move into the agenda as part of our regular council for agreed revisions.
Yeah, I, I am okay to approve the document before the changes at this point.
Okay.
I just want to respect Councilmember Litchfield's opinions and ideas because I'm sure there's, there's some merit in there. And so i- if there's enough agreement that we all want to do that, then I'd like to go to the, the work session, so.
Mayor Protam.
Yeah, I agree with Member Reitz. And I think then if we can approve this today and set time, one hour for discussion, I, I am totally agree. I support that.
Okay.
All right. So I don't know if we need a motion, but we probably just go ahead and like, we're going to bring this back as part of our.
Work session.
Six twenty-one council meeting with, or work session and council meeting for final approval of the regulation. And we'll, we will have a vote, you know, on this and regardless, it'll, it'll, even if nobody gets everything at once, you know, will be, the majority of Council will rule this matter.
You do need a motion.
We need a motion to table it or to bring it back at the next session. So if I can get a motion to bring it back as a work session item and as an agenda item our next council session.
Yes, I make a motion to bring back this agenda item at our next work session.
And then as an agenda on our next council meeting.
And then add this to our agenda for right, immediately following the work session.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right. Thank you, Council. Thank you for, Sharon, for coming and giving your input as we yet again have probably another meeting with you coming up. With, with that, we've run out of agenda items. So Council, we are adjourned at 9:22 PM.